Right, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we're in class. That.
Stay where you want.
Six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two, thank you. Thank you for attending. This is our, um, work today.
I will be, sorry. Yeah. He's not here, yeah.
Check the quorum.
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, can we, uh, let's see. So you called, called the meeting to order?
Okay.
Okay.
The order is.
So in the quorum, there are six commissioners present. Uh, Cindy Wayne is not. Um, so you, you have a quorum, Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah. Please. No, please, no. We'll start with, um, public comments. Do you have any agenda?
You have one public comment not on the agenda? And that is, um. That is, um. Jessica, speak on the Art Los Altos walking tour map.
Yeah. Do we have amplification on the sound?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you to shout it out.
You got it.
Okay, because we have to have those, oh, okay, great.
Awesome. You have a comment?
I, I did send some slides to you guys, and if you have.
You did send it today, I did receive it all forwarded to the commission.
Okay, great. Awesome. So my name is Jessica Agarwal, I'm a Los Altos resident, I live up the street on Marvin Avenue. And I'm a volunteer for the Art Los Altos group. And we're very excited, um, to come to you guys today and talk a little bit more about some of the work that we've done and some of the areas where we'd love to better partner with the, with the park group. For those that don't know about us, we host over a hundred fifty experiences in less than four years, including, um, walking tours on the first Friday, which has been really great to bring the community together and bring them around downtown and show out all the great art pieces that we have available. Uh, we've also done couple sculptures and some media artist events and many hands-on painting experience with over a hundred plus attendees, and seventy percent of those were student. So we're really trying to get all ages, um, together and, and, uh, aligned around the art of Los Altos. We've built a trusted partnership with our businesses and the community members, um, and our vision is establishing Los Altos to be one of the most admired arts and culture destinations in the Bay. And a lot of the work that you guys do add to that as well. So right now, we'd like to come to you, um, and bring our map, which is in front of you, we've given you guys a sample of it, um, in hopes of partnering with you and being the bridge between all of the art that's brought downtown, so whether it be sculpture, um, or the murals, um, and trying to figure out how we can bring a walking tour map to everyone, um, for them to enjoy. And, um, we wanna partner with you guys on this piece, and we, we've done a sample where we put the, both the logos together on the front with you guys and with our group as well. Um, we are a nonprofit group, so we've.
Built this partnership with.
Partnerships with the businesses and gotten sponsorship to help us, um, supplement the cost of the, the map itself. Um, and we also think it's nice for them to show that they're supporting art as well as being part of this map. And I guess that's my, my ask today, is just to take, take a look at the map and, and think about, um, you have pleasure with us to come together and bring, um, art to the downtown, um, and consider, um, doing this as a combined effort.
Any questions from the commission? I have one question. I wanna be very specific.
Yeah.
Specifically, what are you asking?
We would like to put your logo on the front with us as a partner in this, because on the map itself, we're already featuring both some of the pieces that we've helped make happen downtown, as well as some of the amazing sculptures that you guys have already contributed to as well. Um, some of the general.
So this is a sample then?
This is a sample.
Okay, you have distributed this to the public?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're looking for, to take this sample and collaborate with us to make it complete, to share logos?
Yep.
Do they have it?
Yeah, specifically it's putting the logo on the front.
And funding?
Uh, funding, we've actually got it sponsored already with the sponsors that are featured on the map.
Okay, enough sufficient to distribute to the public.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Another question.
Um, this logo, is this the logo you would like to use? So the city's logo, the city seal?
This, the, the park seal, city seal, something that shows our combined effort, right?
Okay.
This is the city.
This is the city.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that if that's what you wanted, it's not us.
It is.
Is it us? Because.
Without getting any discussion.
Okay.
The city isn't willing to put forward a city logo without the commission's support. That's all it would be.
That's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. They don't need us to do it, the.
No, no, no. Maybe.
City Council would say this public art is made possible by the City of Los Altos Park Commission?
We, without getting into, we're starting to discuss the item now?
So we, we have to put it on the agenda, so that's perfect. That helps me understand that.
Looking for support from the commission.
And that's all.
That's fine.
We have to figure out all the details, so.
Okay, and I have a rounding.
Yep.
I have another question.
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is, when you do your tours, if there's public art through the city, are you pointing that out? Okay, and you're crediting the city as it's been the city's artwork?
Yeah.
Okay.
We are, and, and, um, we've been putting like the artist names in there too, because people are asking, who did it, where did it come from? So as much of the history that we know of as our group, we definitely mention that when we're walking.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we do, we do need the maps back, that this is just a sample.
Okay, there you go.
We wanted to showcase how.
How, um, tonight we came down this way.
Yes.
So it sounds like it would be a combination for the art that you identify, choose and sponsor, plus Los Altos city art. Um, would the city have any input into the art that you select?
Uh, it was, it's meant to be a downtown map that covers all art that's featured downtown. So, so, I mean, I think selecting art, it should, it should encompass any of the art that's featured downtown, and if we miss some, then let's.
It would be, so in other words, would it be for existing art that's already out there?
Existing art.
And so, okay, so that's art that the city didn't have any input into?
Um, I, I mean, yes, I think so. It's, it's meant, it's really meant to be from a use case standpoint, it's like people come downtown, visitors, community members, can we have one combined map? I don't care who put the art on the streets, can we have one combined map that showcases as, as an artist, um, admirer, that showcases whatever we have to offer from the city's standpoint?
Okay, so I'm gonna ask one last question, a response from the commentary you made here, which is focused on downtown.
Yes.
So not all around Los Altos. Got it. Okay, thank you. Any need these back?
Any.
May we keep one as an exemplar?
No, please don't, because I don't want that to get out.
Oh.
Not officially, yeah. It's got the city logo on it and then had not been.
Cause it's the walking.
Yeah, can't walk all the way down to South Los Altos, well, you and I can, but.
I mean, you could, you could change the verbiage, it doesn't have to be a walk.
We'll discuss this if it comes up.
Well, some people can't walk, this could be discriminatory, right? I mean, seriously.
Oh, yeah.
We can change this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, just like. Cause there's more down, there's more art than just downtown.
If it becomes a delay, then we can discuss it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, it's a task for people to go visit the galleries, visit the businesses, and just have one sort of collected map in as a focus area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. Really appreciate it. Anybody else?
Anybody come to?
No other, no other public comments, next public comments will be on item number four.
All right.
We're gonna move on to our items for consideration in action. First is, uh, first step is the call for art review. I'm gonna make an overarching comment. Uh, my goal is that we take advantage of all the work staff has done to hopefully rank these, yeah? Rank these and, um. Make our presentation pretty efficient, get through this so that we can have the bulk of this meeting on the work plan.
So I'll, I'll explain how this is going, this is hopefully going to work. Um, it is, i- i- there is some, uh, some leeway in how many we choose. Um, so we need to take that into consideration, um, so everything we say here may not be final, we may add more if we rank them better, um, or we may take some away based on the size, which I'll talk about in a second. So what you have in front of you is a packet for art, uh, each of you have one, and these in no particular order, I know they're numbered, but in no particular order at this point, uh, they are the top of, of the sixty-one submissions, okay? We found a dividing line at, what was it? Four, ten. So from twenty to ten and then below ten, the below ten has been left off of this. This has plenty, this will be plenty to choose to fill this wall right here. Um, we are looking anywhere from, depending on the size, eight pieces if they're very large, to maybe as many as twenty if they're very small. Okay, so that's, that's what we're looking for. And I don't know where that number's gonna be until we start choosing the definites that are gonna be in this art gallery for, for this season. Um, so you have, what's the total, thirty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. There are thirty-five entries of the sixty-one.
So these are the highest?
These are the highest, yes.
The list itself is not in rank order?
No.
Do we have that information today even on a slot?
We do have that information, but not today. We'd like you to make some decisions on what's in front of you first, okay? So these were all your top choices of this group who voted, including Commissioner Wayne. So, um, so this. Wait here. Uh, no, she's not. So, so with that, uh, Chair, I don't know how you want to proceed, if you wanna go one at a time and review them quickly, or if you wanna, uh, cut the list down even more, I can go look at the list, I prefer not to, uh, because we don't know how many we're gonna choose, but if you would like to cut that, shave that down even more from the thirty-five that we have in front of you.
That's a very professional for you. Um, if, if we could get the report, which everything is in rank order, it seems like that would make it a super easy thing to do, what do you think about postponing this meeting? I don't know if we can.
No, no, I can go run and get it. I don't have it. I didn't break.
One question to the commission, um, I think you and I are in alignment on this, just hearing what you're saying right now, and that is that it'd be nice to see the rank list, and then what we can do is look at the top twenty, quick, very quickly in order, if anybody remembers the pictures, cause we have more than twenty here, and says, hey, twenty-five is like my number one and I wanna make a case, then you can, but I would rather not even talk about anything less than twenty, unless somebody raises their hand to advocate. And if, and.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare this. I, if I, if I may interrupt, Jamie, can you explain what's going on here?
So to make it easy, the first twenty, I did it in order. So the first one you see is the highest ranked average score.
Thank you.
Good job, you too.
So if you want to cut it there, but the, as Manny mentioned, based upon five, that affects, so you could, we made, there was a clear delineation on ten, so we included anything ten and above.
Score.
But everything that you see is listed in order, so the first that you see all the way back, this is the top one that receives the highest average score.
So the first spot twenty?
Everything is in order, so from one all the way back. This was the, the last four had, all had tens, so, um.
Okay, I'm done.
And we need to approve at least, or at the most twenty, right? That's where.
Depending on five.
Depending on size.
Depending on size, because, so the example that I'll give you, the top one is twenty-one inches by twenty-eight inches by point five. If you look at some. Things.
Twenty-five.
Like number twenty-five.
Ninety-six inches.
Ninety-six inches by forty-two inches by one inch. So if you pick something like that size, that would drastically change what's available size-wise in the gallery. So that's why we included from ten and above, cause if we go with smaller piece four feet from the wall. So that is on this wall.
What does it mean when the depth is zero?
That is a, it's one, it hasn't, it hasn't been.
So, does it, here's what I would like to do, first step, just first throw, the first ten, none of the tens, does anybody absolutely not like any of those?
I don't like the first one.
Sam, just let me look through myself, there's a fear that.
I don't think so.
I have a question.
Are any of the artists in the audience? No. Okay.
It's okay, it's okay, artist or judge it.
They could be watching right now, but it's, it's your choice.
Don't be, you can be kind about who you say, you know?
Please.
First one.
Okay, so I have a question, does anybody absolutely not like including the top ten, one through? Yes. Or C?
I don't like six. And eight.
Six.
And number eight. Can I take that note? So you're okay with everything else?
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, you, you did?
Yeah, I'm, I don't particularly care for number four.
Four and. You. Um.
Yeah.
I like all of them too, I actually voted for all these. Um, Teresa?
I have a question. Before I say anything else, are we keeping the theme, what winter means to me?
What winter means to me.
Then, and, and I, I took the approach, what men.
Yeah, it means to people, different for me, but still.
Chris, you know, winter. So, you know, I, I'm not saying that, for me, with one through ten, I would put this on my home, but I know that for somebody, one of these seem like it would really attract the, you know, so. But then, that's not everybody's criteria, and somebody might make this, this, so.
If I, if you don't mind me, I haven't.
I have a tip too, I think it's really important that we choose different mediums, so not everything's like a painting, not everything is a drawing. So I think that's something important to consider too.
Agree.
And not the same subject, you know, not everything's a landscape or.
Okay. Okay, are you ready, Teresa?
Oh, kinda. Okay, so, and remember, there's things that you absolutely really don't like in this top ten.
That's true.
Because I know what artists go through to make things, but I prefer thirty to five. It's not that I don't like five, it's just that I prefer the artist.
I like thirty-two, I think it's really interesting, and it's a draw, it's a pencil draw.
It's a pencil drawing.
Okay, yeah.
Looks like a photograph.
Yeah. We'll, we'll get to that in a second, right now I just wanna kinda clear out certain things.
Okay.
Sorry, that will lose.
And, and I. I can go with note six and note one. If you're looking for my notes.
One and six.
One and six.
And then, y'all?
Yeah, I like one or six either.
You like or you don't like? So I would, one trend I saw was six. Everybody picked six except for Jen and myself, so I'm going to, we're gonna take that one, we're gonna pull it out.
How did six end up in the top ten? If everyone.
By votes, it's all by votes. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna question the ranking, we're just going to now review on the ranking, so, um, so six I, I've pulled out, just for the time being. Um, and then eight got two, and one got two. Um, I'm not gonna pull those out, but I'm gonna put a dot by them, I'm just gonna say two.
How about sixteen and seventeen, I don't know how people feel about those.
We're not to those numbers yet. Yeah, hold on a second.
With the top twenty, I thought she said.
No, I, no, I'm sorry. You know, it's so sorry. I can offer suggestion historically what we've done, and, and I mean, we don't have to do this, but I'm just saying historically what we've done, and I mean, since that we literally go picture by picture and we take a vote, yes or no? And it really, it's quick and it eliminates everything and it's just, yeah, I mean, cause this, this seems like it might be kinda complicated, keep track of it.
The top ten?
I'll just go through every single one.
And then if you take a vote, it's just consensus.
Okay, so we're redoing the cafe?
Yeah, it's fine.
Well, we're, but, I don't know, we're kinda narrowing it down.
But otherwise, we're doing that with sixty-one of them.
Yeah.
So the cafe got us this.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cafe got us.
But I mean, clearly we all, like, our opinions have changed on that one, on six.
So, not mine, but, yeah, I, I got to for, for a bunch of you guys.
I don't know, we don't have to do it, I just, it, it was pretty efficient, I felt like when we did it.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, so we.
All right, so just no discussion, just vote.
Yeah.
I, that I can handle, what I can't handle is twenty discussions because we're beating.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But if somebody is really like adamant about one, then.
Who's, who's the chair?
I am.
Okay. Yeah, you just go for it, just go for it. Kill it, do whatever you want.
How are we doing the top, what are we doing, the whole thing?
How many people wanna go to the point, with the frame, quick vote? Okay, so one, two, three, four, against, you said no, and two.
No, I don't care. I, I don't, I don't.
So four and one, we'll go through with the quick vote.
I hate.
Okay. So one, raise your hand if you, now we're gonna flip, we're firm, raise your hand if you like one. Okay. Four and two. Number two, raise your hand if you like two. Three, raise your hand if you like three. Six. Four. Raise your hand if you like four. Two, three, four. Raise your hand if you like five.
Can we word it differently, or be like?
Well, right now, yes or no?
Okay, I'll use yes or no. It breaks my heart, yes, okay.
Trust me. We, some of these are artists and they actually can take criticism pretty well, they know that they don't win every commission. Um, okay, so what was that one? Five and, I'm sorry, please repeat.
Six.
Uh, I, I didn't pass, it was.
Daddy gets, catch the votes on five.
Five one.
Yep.
Six. If you like it. Three and three. Seven. One, two, three, four, five, and one. Eight. One, two, three, four. One, two, nine. One, two, three, two, three. And.
One, two, three, no, this is the same artist as the soup.
I think.
I hung it about, so I feel like you should only have one submission.
I agree.
Well, Eileen has three in the first ten.
Uh, what was the other one? The size of the soup? Wait, again?
Oh.
Good head.
Push ten is the same.
She has the stag, the, uh, two, ten.
Oh, oh, I see, two, two, ten.
Doesn't matter, just go through it, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, 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 we'll figure it out, yeah. But I just, I think we should make note of that. Yeah, so two.
Artists often commit more than one.
Yeah.
She's, she's amazing.
Yeah, we've been swayed by her absolute competence, yes.
Yes. All of these people are so talented.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were at ten, and what I have for ten is five-one, now let's move to eleven, volcanic cone. One, two, three. Two, three.
I have this one, sure.
Number twelve? Twelve. One, two, three. Sorry, four. Four and two. Probably twelve is, is the range. Thirteen. One, two, three, four, five, six. Fourteen. Seventeen, two, three, four. Four, two. Fifteen, winter verticals. One, two, three, four, four, two.
This one's pretty huge.
Eighteen.
Yep.
Number seven. One, two, eight. Well, I know, I was thinking about that.
I know.
It should. Matter.
You can hit me.
Yeah. You can handle this. Thank you. Seventeen, winter and Palisades. One, two. Three, three and three. Eighteen. Winter. One, two, three, three, three. Nineteen, winter window walk. One, two.
Question on this, it's like a 3D printed or something?
It's, it's 3D print, so is it?
It's 3D print.
Digital media.
It's, it's 3D printed.
Does that mean it's got digital media? It's layered, it's textured.
Yeah, like, it's just some texture to it.
Yeah.
It does have texture.
Yeah, the mention, yeah.
Are we supposed to have a, with a simple number?
Are we supposed to have one?
I mean, it's people.
The star name.
Yeah, what is winter to me?
Yeah.
As long as we're inclusive, like, like La Posada has also got some imagery and I'm, you know, although none of it, it's just candles, but you, you can, you can impart that who that is.
This artist submitted another piece too, is it in our top? Vote, get.
Um, actually, the two, you guys repeated that submission.
Oh, was that it?
Yeah. It was. This one. Uh, number nineteen.
It's also where?
You do, you do, no.
So let's repeat, let's repeat nineteen, let's do the vote, who supports nineteen? I do. One, two, three.
It's hard to see it.
It's me.
Don't forget to, I have to represent like winter.
What winter means to me, I agree, and I'm having a little trouble seeing it, but there's teacups and things in there.
Uh, twenty, first snow in Tahoe.[1588.81] One, two, three, three and three. Twenty-one, Los Sol, number one.
Wait, that's sixty feet, why?
Sixty.
We've got, we've gotta figure that one out, we think it's a typo, but if it's sixty feet, I, 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 it's not realistic.
Eight inches deep?
No, it's five.
Yeah, that is, it might be framed, that's why.
How can you ship that on anything? That's larger than a, than a shipping container.
That's what we think, we, we, we need to follow up, if we really like this, then we'll follow up with the size. I would imagine it's a typo because a sixty by sixty would be bigger than this square.
Question by this artist was this one, which is a more reasonable size. It's thirty-five, Los Sol, number five. It's eighty inches long.
No, he, that says eighty feet.
Well, okay, you really think it's eighty?
No.
I mean, can't be eighty feet.
I, I just can't.
There are no buildings in the city that can host it.
Well, clarify. If it is, then it's gone.
We could put a contingency on it.
That's fine, if the vote is there, so. Let's look.
So twenty-one, conceptually, with a big caveat next to it. Who likes it? If the size makes it, but they're all good. So who gets one? One, five. Two. Two, winters and. One, two, two, five. Twenty-three, first week everywhere, watercolor. One. One. Twenty-two is two, four, okay. Twenty-three is one, five. Twenty-four, reflection, twenty-one, number twenty, I'm not gonna say the number, reflection.
I was thinking, but, okay. I was, this artist, I think, submitted more than one also. And was it in the, is the other one in the packet? Okay.
Let's use, uh, repeat as a, uh, eliminator when, when we get there. Uh, twenty-five, Sance Fosse.
Is this a triptych?
It is a triptych, and it's large, ninety-six by forty-two by one. So, I would suggest, you know, use your own criteria, but it'll take up a lot of space. So, anybody?
Me.
Twenty-five, guess one. Twenty-six. Coral Index. Two and four. Twenty-seven, Obsidian Teardrop. Two and four. Twenty-eight, Blue Vision. Okay. Zero. It's twenty-nine, A Blue Frog. One, two, three, three and three.
Okay, good.
Thirty, Ready for Winter, The Chains. One, two, three, four. Four and two, one. Is this the same tractor, right?
Yes.
Same person. Thirty-one, Sijun, number three. One, Emma, so. Two, one. And thirty-two, Nadia. One and five. Thirty-three, Scenes of the Fog in Euphotic. Two, one and five. Three, four. And Sucey, three. So we have Sance Fosse, one, and dimensions on this one are twenty by thirty by one and enough. One and five. And then finally, thirty-five, another, uh, piece by this, uh, the snow guy, girl, whatever. Thirty-five, Los Sol, number five. I like it. Twenty-two, spirits too bad.
Eighty feet.
No, it's not, if you look at it, it's twenty-four, and then it's gonna be eighty.
Three and three. I'll put the asterisk by, what were the other ones? And, uh, the other.
It's not gonna be, there's no way you should.
Hang on, look.
No, there's no way I should. No, it's not.
All right, so, based on this, I'm gonna cross off anything that didn't get at least three votes. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-one is off the table. Twenty-two is off the table. So three and under. It's two each. Okay, so you wanna just limit it to fours and fives?
I think so.
Okay, that's cool with me, all right, so. The six is off the table. Nine is off the table. Eleven, off the table. Sixteen off the table. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty off the table, twenty-one off the table. Number two off, twenty-three off, twenty-four off, twenty-five, twenty-six off, twenty-seven off, twenty-eight off, twenty-nine off. Thirty-one off, thirty-two off, thirty-three off. Now, of the ones that I knocked off, does anybody wanna make a case verbally? What do we have left? Let me count what we have left, one, two, three, four, five. Seven. Eight, and eleven.
Did five get knocked out?
No.
No, it didn't. Five?
Thirty get knocked out?
No.
Uh, thirty did not, so we have twelve.
Okay, we can go back and, like, maybe evaluate the ties?
Yeah.
That would be a good.
Well, what about the duplicate artist? Even thirty are the same artist.
That'd be good, let me count here for sure, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven, twelve. Thirteen, I counted thirteen, they have four, or five, or six. Okay? So, of those thirteen, let's see if any are duplicates.
Okay, five and thirty are.
Only, only one artist we have identified as being, signing the thing? So we don't know the other duplicates.
Jamie will know.
You do know, Jamie? Okay. And, and actually, does it really matter?
Yeah.
It's all good.
Well, I think it's like, it's better PR to show that we're, you know, giving people a chance and obviously, I mean, as a, as a one person, you know what I mean? I also think, like, it's good that we have a smaller number, because it, it lets, like, each piece speak, and it's not gonna look so cluttered, you know? There's gonna be breathing room.
So, I would suggest the first, the first elimination from the thirteen so far is duplicate artists, and let's choose between the two that we want and go with that. And then the next, I would suggest, media. To get diversity in media, and then diversity in the topic. So, um, all right. Does that follow?
Yes, here's the only thing, is that we have to consider size also, so as we do this, shouldn't we have a few that are just in case, that we agree on?
Yeah, create alternates.
Okay.
Flexible alternative.
Yeah, 'cause if the size doesn't work, we got an issue.
Okay, and, and I just wanted real quick technical question, when you say twenty-one by twenty-eight, that includes any framing, right? If it's framed?
It should.
Okay. All right, so, uh, everybody, um, can you look at the following numbers and tell us if there are any duplicates in artists, if I give them to you?
Yeah.
We'll be right back. We gotta get this shit up.
Okay, so we know five and thirty are dupes.
Yeah, which say then?
Five and thirty are duplicates, so should we start with those?
And then.
Chairman, may I offer some assistance on this? I was looking, and I narrowed it down, you have six, zero vote. Three pieces. You have a five, one vote, three pieces, so I'm think, maybe you wanna do that, you have a four, two vote, you have seven pieces. So those are your top, and I think if that's consistent, maybe you just talk about those in each category and say, are there any duplicates, say two, three?
That's what we're doing, we're only gonna.
Okay, good.
We're only gonna address the thirteen right now. Because we have enough to consider without dipping down below. And I understand that I, when I started this conversation, I was like, if somebody really wants to fight for twenty-five. We'll get to that.
Yeah.
Last, because I, I think there's enough good stuff here, I mean, everything is good, it's just a matter of, you know.
So how much should five get, and how much should thirty get?
Hey, Jamie, what's your artist's name, thirty-two?
How much is that? Number five, sorry, with thirty, number thirty-two? We'll get it all there.
Well, we'll.
I wanna make sure, I wanna get.
You're looking for the vote, or the point?
Right now, we're gonna.
I just wanna know the artist's name.
Oh, we're, we're not to know the artist yet, we're not, this is supposed to be a blind pick.
It does, this sounds a little bit, I'm just curious.
Thirty-two actually has it, um, this person had, the artist had two in the top thirty-five. So it was this, uh, same, thirty-two is the same artist as number, or the same piece, uh, as number three.
Thirty-two is this artist?
Yeah, I just wanna know the name.
Oh, the. Elena. I'm not, I'm not. Uh, Lucina, Linyan, Deja.
I, I don't wanna talk about artist names right now, every minute in this meeting, we gotta get through a lot of stuff today, so, um, what I'd like to do is have you eliminate duplicates, so I'm gonna list the numbers that got the, the, the item numbers that got the highest votes. And if you could tell us, if you could, you look at artists, we already know one because they signed it, but the others, we can't, be sure. The ones that we are, um, I'm gonna do them in declining order, so I'm gonna start with the six Os, and go to the five Ones, and then the fourteen. So the six Os are number two, number three, number thirteen. That's it. And then the five Ones are five, seven, ten. Number four, two are one, four, eight, twelve, fourteen, fifteen. Thirty, that's it. We already know that five and thirty are same artists. We have two. Seven.
And what's the other, and ten are the same artist.
Finally, two, seven, seven, nine. Three, two. Three by the same. Yeah. Two, seven, one, two, three. What I would, you know, okay, and, uh.
Question, I don't, do we really need to care about the artists? I mean, are we just going on the subject of quality of the work? And if one person happens to be, capture our attention, then that's okay, as opposed to arbitrarily canceling somebody out. Because I'm punishing them for being good.
For being, yeah, right, okay, so, but a comment earlier was made that perhaps we just decide that we're going to have one per artist, so that we have the largest number of people accepted into the show. Uh, it's arbitrary, right? Um, it also gives us a greater opportunity to mix media and to mix topic, although this person has, you know, comparing the stag to the bowl of soup, to the. I, I would say the stag and Winter's Light are similar theme, although different topic.
I mean, the only reason I suggest that, or one of the reasons I suggest that, is that we'll finish this immediately, and we'll, we'll be done quickly. As opposed to, we're gonna get into debating local, local pieces, if that's what everybody wants to do, but if we were doing it in rank order, which is already, we've got that, we could just give that list now to many.
Thirteen, yeah, I think it's too many.
Well, and then, and maybe what he does is, I have a sort of work, is that we take the top ten that will, will fit, and then if there's room for eleven, then you take eleven, then you take twelve and thirteen and fourteen.
We can do that, or, or, or fewer, I mean, 'cause they are, how about we break ties, I mean.
What about what Teresa suggested, why don't we just, the ones that are duplicate, just pick the highest ranking one, like, of two, two, seven, and ten, which one was ranked the highest? And then we'll just pick that one from the artist.
So two got six, seven got five, and ten got five, so then let's just do it.
Yeah, 'cause we're only gonna have ten left if we do that.
Yeah.
Perfect, and then the next one. I know, but, I mean, we can't choose them all, well, we could make a note of that. But that seems like the best idea, just in the interest of time and.
Just get, give, so the six Os automatically are in.
Yeah.
And then the five Ones, we're gonna, because, uh, this artist got a six O and two five Ones, are you suggesting we keep all three, or are you suggesting we toss one of the five Ones out?
For which artist?
The first one, Eileen.
So.
I mean, ten, three that got.
Yeah, I know, I would suggest just picking one from her, so the six O, and then we can select one from, that we crossed out that was really close, like a, like a four, two, or something.
Well, she, her, hers got six O, five, one, five, one.
So I'd pick the six O, 'cause we all like it.
Got it, I, I see that. Here's the only issue with that, I think some of your commissioners are suggesting that, that we can, she has earned at least two spots. Question, Chair.
We have eight paintings on one side of the wall, so we have plenty of room to pick as many as we have sort of there, we don't eliminate any more, I don't think.
Oh, okay, because I thought that eight picture space?
Oh, no, we get the whole wall, we get the whole thing.
Oh.
They've already taken some of them down.
Okay.
How many have there now, eight are remaining?
This side, this wall's full, this wall's not full at all.
Do you remember? Why did you realize that you went all the way down?
You do both, still depending on the size, yeah.
So it comes, there are two sections, um, so it's pretty much the wall to the, uh, as you're facing the restroom, to the very right, and then continuing all the way to almost where the AED is.
Some of them we have, we had, I was gonna say.
I don't allow us to stack them.
So maybe just prioritize those, and then we can revisit.
We have.
So if you eliminate the ones that are duplicates, we have to.
Right, but that's what we're debating right now, is eliminating duplicates, there are those that want to eliminate, and those that, so we are not unified on that decision.
I will say that Eileen's, I think all three of Eileen's paintings are very good. So. Okay, that's one comment, I, I mean, it's not like the same stuff.
Here's a proposal, this ranked list of thirteen to staff, right, six, O, five, one, four, two. You know, there are probably one or two artists that have two in, and then there's one that has three in. As you folks are fitting things on the wall, if it comes down to, gosh, I'm gonna eliminate two artists because I'm taking three from Eileen, I'm only gonna take two from her, and I'm gonna stick another artist in, does that make sense? If everybody fits, put all thirteen photos up, or paintings up.
That, that makes a lot of sense, and I, I wanna add though, that Fisher Couture actually was, um, responsible for hanging these in placement and all of that, so she's very familiar with that whole process. And this work is. Yeah, volunteering her.
Totally, yeah, I already said I would.
So you already, you already looked at.
We're taking this whole list.
There are thirteen.
Yeah, there's a full eight, thirteen, and we'll just fit as many as we can, and if we eliminate it, we'll eliminate.
And I was gonna say, which could, could do an ad hoc committee to hang.
Yeah, that's what, we had already decided it was gonna be Terry and me, we decided that, like, a few meetings ago, we voted.
Yeah, and with the ad hoc committee, they can help us fit it, or eliminate. I just don't, yeah, I don't want it to be on staff against council or commission, so, that's fine. All right, we'll take all of them then.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yes, okay, the only thing is, again, we're gonna have three by one artist, the other is, we haven't discussed the mediums that they're working with. So I'm gonna have an abundance of oil, are we representing anything else, that's what I wanna.
Well, the only thing that's vastly different, you know, we've got watercolor, acrylic, photography, oil, mixed media, do we? No, I'm saying of this, in this pile right now.
In that list of thirteen, what do we have?
Okay, so now, let's, let's go to that, so I'm gonna put right here, quick, I'm gonna put folk, the photo, that's oil. This is, I don't know what paint, but it kinda looks like either watercolor or acrylic.
Other former art commissioners, but when I went through and voted, I, I thought about.
Watercolor, sorry.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to say, I, I don't know about the other, former art commissioners, but I know when I went through and voted, I considered the medium, the different pieces, and so I don't know, if you, if you did that, then maybe at least three of our votes already account for the medium and the different themes and all that.
I think there's enough mix, honestly. I think what's most important is that the showcase is a theme, I mean, there's a lot of different artistic expression, not everything's the same.
For example, this one has LED on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's super cool. That was, that's really interesting. So, the only thing, did the, uh, did the 3D, uh, digital print?
Digital 3D print?
No.
One make it?
No.
Okay, so, we don't have anything dimensional from that standpoint. Um, and, uh, there, nobody submitted, other than that, nobody submitted anything that has too much dimension.
Well, the label's kinda cool, I mean, that, number four.
Yes.
The light will.
So do you wanna go through the process of validating that we have diversity in medium, or do we trust it based on visuals here? Yeah, I don't think we really have any mixed media, other than that number, um, number four, and it's probably not really mixed media, because adding light doesn't look like mixed media.
We've got fifteen says mixed media, we don't know what it is, but it says it's mixed media.
It looks like, it was like tissue paper on it, actually.
On fifteen, what is the nature of the mixed media, do they describe more specifically? Uh, winter verticals.
They did, I would have to look, dive a little bit more into the description, which I could, um, I could send to the commission, but it would.
I, I'm personally satisfied with diversity here, I'm bummed about La Posada not getting in, just because there's no, uh, there's nothing for any of our, um, primarily workers in the city to come and see and align with, but there's nature and there's everything else, so.
I, I, I share your concern and a little disappointment, do you think that the commissioners would entertain adding it as number fourteen?
Sure. Entertain taking out one of the ones we have duplicates of and putting in that.
But, I mean, I, I think, I, I agree, um, Chair, the Chair, um, that we should stop at thirteen, but in the interest of, you know, recognizing the cultural message for La Posada, um, just adding that, because I think people who work here would love.
I think anybody that looks at any of these will love everything.
I agree, right. Right.
I know, I didn't wanna be the one to say that, but thanks.
Sorry, one at a time, you, you have a comment, you know?
Yeah, it's presumptive to think that a Mexican worker would.
I agree, I agree.
So, so like, I can't like Picasso because he's Spanish.
I, I just want to say I was born in Mexico, so, I mean.
It doesn't matter, I'm just saying.
Well, I, I kinda.
And that one doesn't look very good.
Oh, wow.
Well, it depends on your style, it's kind of.
I know, I know, that's what I mean, like, so we voted and the group didn't think it was worth.
How many votes did?
They got three, three.
Okay, so it was considered. Okay, and how about Mardi Gras, nine, how many did that one get? We had the, they had the bowl of Chinese soup.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a matter of, first of all.
Which is the Chinese soup?
Uh, ten?
That, that's, that's.
No, not.
Seven.
Whatever, seven, okay, okay, how many did nine get, okay?
I think we're going into the weeds there.
Yeah, all, all I was raising was an issue of representation.
We, I think the nine and sixteen deserve to be in.
Move on, we have a work group to do.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to us. I will fit them all in.
Well, now who's up?
Uh, number sixteen, is what we're debating, right?
Yeah. The only one I'll comment is, if you look at the size, they were talking about it being in a, a window, it's twelve feet by five feet by four feet.
It's twelve feet?
What they submitted as far as size, even if they talked about it being in a window display, so it is rather large.
A mannequin for reference, down the road.
Yeah.
So. Want to bring that size to the commissions.
So, so then, okay, they, luckily for us, the twenty-one and thirty-five didn't make it in the top, because those are the ones with also feet. Twelve, twenty feet, ninety-six feet.
Yes, and none of those made it.
And they, they, you talked to them about that scale, so you, you know.
I will get clarification to, just to, for curiosity, but none of those two pieces made the, the class really better.
I, I think for the pasada, could you check on the actual size? If it's twelve inches by five inches, you know, then that's incidental, but if it's twelve feet, that's not possible for.
The context, as one of the commissioners pointed out, the photo, if you look at the mannequin for context, I don't think it's twelve inches by five inches. It's, it's in a window display.
Forty cubic feet? Okay, that's like a, that's like a.
It's a mirror.
It's a, it's a window display, so they were, they were taking in the context of.
So I guess we don't tell people sizes to submit, they just submit whatever they want.
No, I think that's a mannequin, so you could tell it's like a photo, see the shadow of logo wear?
Yeah.
So you could tell that that's like on a storefront window, and this.
I thought the mannequin was part of the painting, and I thought that made it very interesting, I was like, wow, they really make some interesting things.
It's like the shadow of the logo wear, I think it's like a clothing.
And I didn't like the logo part, yeah, okay.
Right. Okay, yeah, if it's, if it's too large scale, it's too large scale, I mean, we can't, we can't post that, it's too big. All right, um.
Do we need to vote on this, or just something to move on, is it actually?
I think you all voted already, so we have the information and we'll, we'll look at the next.
So we're gonna submit the thirteen back in the rank order, and you will use size judgment with the ad hoc committee. Members are Fisher Couture, Fisher Morris. Make final tip.
And who else wants to do it, I don't have to do it.
No, that's fine.
Because we voted it, we knew about ad hoc.
Because we're seven people, we can have an ad hoc committee of three.
Yeah, that's fine, we can close once we're done.
Violating any Brown Act, so, but the official ad hoc is two people.
Okay, but I think the problem is that you can't be in one, more than one committee at a time, so that.
Yeah, well, we don't have any other ad hoc committees right now.
And the hanging, once the hanging's done, you come back to the commissioner.
Is there a timeframe for them?
We need to contact the artists to get the artwork now, so.
Any final comments by anybody? Okay, then we'll definitely move the next. What, maybe just because me, we didn't ask for public comments on the art.
I didn't see any public comment, there's no public comment.
We don't have it this last meeting?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we, we don't, we don't have them, uh, we're, we'll get them at the next meeting, they don't have to. They don't have to be approved on this meeting, we can do it next meeting.
Is it possible to crack a window a little bit, am I the only one that thinks it's hot in here? Usually warm and I'm roasting. But if you guys get cold.
Just talk.
You're not, okay. But if it does.
Um, Chair, in, in the interest of, of our guest time, do you wanna go to their topic? Because it's gonna be on some future agendas. Because you don't wanna sit here for this whole thing, I, I wouldn't.
We have to follow the procedure to change the agenda. All right, so we have to.
No, you can do whatever you want, you're the Chair.
No, I, it's not that, it's procedure, they just have to follow procedure. Um, if I can get two people to agree to change, uh, discussing changing the agenda and putting that to a vote, because that does have to go to a vote. And then we can do that. And what you're, and. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Commissioner Yonkway.
Chair, you can just say you're changing that agenda item to right now, and if anybody disagrees, then it can go to a vote. So I think you're.
If anybody disagrees.
If anybody thinks that that's not the proper procedure, just ask them, I would say, and you're okay, in changing the order. You can't change agenda items without, or continue, but you can just change the order.
What I'd be doing, okay, so, I'm following Robert's rules of order, if I wanna change the order of the agenda, which I can do, I, the, the agenda item is future agenda item, so we would then raise that to talk now, which means then the commission has to talk about future agenda items.
Right, all of them.
We can't skip your public comment and then go back to the other side. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna ask the body, the attendees, very quick, it, it is on future agenda item?
It is.
Okay, all three of you? Okay, great, then, um, I'll go ahead and make the decision to move item number four to follow item number one, does anybody disagree? All right, we're gonna do that.
Hey, first speaker for item number four, George Zoski. Wanted to show up and plug him and speak to the commission.
Speaker's not with you.
My weak voice, I can't speak as well. The item on the future gym on four was the, uh, D, the Bendigo and Green Oaks.
I gotta leave. I, I have to recuse myself then, yeah, because I live on, I'm, I'm one of your guys' neighbors now that I realize it.
There's no discussion on it, there's no discussion, it's just the comment, that's all it is, yeah.
Can you repeat the, the four B?
Uh, of course, number D is on the Bendigo, which is basically Bendigo Drive and Brenn, Green Oaks Lane.
Yeah.
Um, the city property, there's a lot that, uh, is actually directly across the street from my home. And, um, then, my wife is there, but then Dr. Beach's, his home is also a lot there. But our question was, uh, there's been discussion about putting a park on that lot, and the city owns that lot. The lot is a very small lot, and so, we don't know what you guys were deciding to do, but, uh, putting a park there, it, there's barely even room for a, uh, single family home on that lot. And there's three large, beautiful oak trees on that lot that would have to be cut down, which I don't think you really wanna do. Uh, so our, uh, thing we were talking about was, when we first moved here, um, in nineteen ninety, that to, we've been, all of us have been, you know, rich owners, that lot, what we were told that lot was a city property. They had put down, I guess, heavy material and then covered with bark. For several years, it stayed as a nice, empty lot, you know, all across the street, no weeds, no whatever, and there was even discussion putting an art piece on that lot or something, like down the road or whatever. But, uh, right now, uh, we had to literally let the maintenance people know that the city even owned it several years ago. And, and every year we had to call them and say, well, there's weeds now, because over time naturally, that bark had break, broke down, I mean, the, uh, the black carpet broke down, and the bark, and people had walked on that lot or whatever happened, and so gradually weeds started coming up. And it didn't get bad, except for the last probably five or six, eight years, seven years since nineteen ninety when we moved in. So our question was always, um, we didn't know whether you're gonna, if someone's, um, was gonna put a park on there, which didn't make sense, because there's not even a place to park it in the street, it was a neighborhood street, it's, could we at least, you know, do like we had done in the pale square, and we more financially, you know, not as expensive to just level it out like you had done in the past, put some heavy, you know, plastic or whatever, and then put some decent bars on it, and it stays nice for years without spending a hell of a lot of money, you know, in taxpayer dollars that we really don't wanna spend necessarily on something like that. But our whole question was, we really don't wanna park with, because it's, it's too small. And there's, it's a dead end, that whole area is dead end, there's thirty-two homes there. And you, you dead end in Green Oak, Bendigo's like two home space Bendigo, mine and somebody else's.
Um, I should've told you, you forgot three minutes, which.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Which have passed, so, just to give you more opportunity, are you folks going to speak?
Yes, Jean Zoski's next.
Okay, so, um.
Did you want to speak?
You're heading at, you're basically at the end, um, you want to close your comments and.
Yeah, just basically that we'd like this, she's something done with it, so it isn't just one big, you know, lot of weeds.
Okay. And, uh, it's a, we are not allowed to answer your questions, however, we can ask clarifying questions if there's something you've said that we don't understand, does anybody have any of those?
I have a question, so, has anyone suggested to you that the city was going to put a park there?
At, at a meeting prior, um, it was brought up to me by, uh, one of my neighbors that, uh, someone had said, well, why don't we put a park like some, uh, stuff for kids to play on or whatever, but like I said, it's, it's a small lot, that's the only reason we thought it was gonna be a park.
Any other questions?
Um, do you envision it being anything other than what it is, or do you think it's perfect just the way it is, as long as it's maintained?
Well, if it's maintained, it's, well, we'd like, and, and it's, it's a nice open area. Uh, and the, the, the problem is, is it's too small to put anything else, it's just a lot. We really don't wanna see the trees cut down, because they're beautiful trees.
I have a couple of questions, so I do remember this came up before, and it does come up periodically, that little space. So, if something were to be put on, it's a, it's a heavy walking area to your neighborhood, I know a lot of people walk through there. So, um, it came up as maybe an adult fitness, one or two pieces going in there, how would you feel about that there?
I think we, as you're walking, you stop and you do a little. We don't wanna, this is a discussion.
It's a, I'm asking them a question I can't handle.
Clarifying.
Why would they sign on?
Questions outside of what you've mentioned.
Sorry. Asking you to clarify, that's it. Thank you, thank you.
Three minutes?
Yeah. So thank you for your time, we, it's nice to know we have three minutes, so, the reality of this small piece of property is, oh, Jean Zoski, Z O S K Y, this small property has these enormous hundred-year-old oak trees that everybody adores as they walk past it, and there's a lot of dog walkers that, um, use that particular lot and meet and greet. So there has been some respectable type of community efforts in that particular lot. But the trees are gorgeous and to see them go would be heartfelt, I, I know that we have to have special permits even for when trees are dead, and these are still thriving, so we really wanna see them, and the parking issue would be pretty serious because little tiny kids don't appreciate cars coming back and forth and parking, and we do have some problems. So I would be cautious about that as well, thank you. Did it have a clarifying question? I have one clarifying question. Go forward. Um, where did you hear that the trees were gonna get cut down? Well, neighbors said that they were gonna put a park in, and the only way to put any type of equipment or a jungle gym would be eat a couple trees down, there's just not enough space between the trees to safely put any. Did you hear that there was gonna be a jungle gym there? Play equipment, swings. Thank you.
One big clarifying question, who, are you able to identify the person who actually said there was gonna be a park there? It might help us keep track of it.
No, because it came from a neighbor who had spoken with somebody on a different street that, or not in our, that, that community, that had thought it would be a great idea to put a park there. Thank you.
Next, Tony Beach, speaker.
Yes, and I live on Green Oak Lane, uh, since nineteen eighty-nine.
Washington Report.
Yes.
That's where I know, okay, corgi.
Yes. That's my board, sorry. Yes, and, um, you know, we have Mary Mead Park, it's a wonderful park close by, we have Holt Park, uh, there's a one-off of Springer, and Los Altos does a great job of the parks. The neighbor, we think, complained that there are weeds in this park, well, weeds are gonna form in the spring. It's just part of what happens in Los Altos, and the city gets to it when they can, I don't see this as the need to, um, alter the structure, it's been there for many, many years, to put a park in, when you have beautiful parks out in Los Altos. That's really my main concern.
Hold on, sir. Hold, hold a question, because, uh, it did, it was on our agenda, so, we are now a mix of an art commission and the park commission, so the art commission wasn't here when this was on our agenda. So there's some confusion at this point.
I think, I think we were.
Here, okay, 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 but my question is, uh, so I understand it's a city piece of property, and I need to ask Director Hernandez a question, but, um, isn't there something in your neighborhood that had to do with the builder? And that thing, and that, their responsibility, or no?
Builder, um, we were told when the development started in eighty-nine, that this lot had trees that recluded their, a house being put on, it's a slightly under ten thousand square foot lot, standard lot, um, and there was not enough space because of the trees to put a house on it, so they came to a decision to leave it as open space, and it's gonna function apply during this time.
Okay, so I, thank you, I appreciate that, I couldn't recall those details, thank you. For the record, that's anecdotal at this point, so we can, we have to go do research if.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, I just wanted to clarify the space a little bit, and I do have a question for Manny.
Okay, um, it's not a discussion topic, okay, thank you for your public comment, you're welcome to say, or.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, to finish out the future agenda items, what we typically do is we say, here's what we have on our future agenda items, if anybody have, do at least, uh, it only takes two, right, um, to put something on a future agenda. Um, does anybody have anything to suggest to add to our future agenda items?
Things we're gonna have to work on for a while.
Commissioner Morris?
I think we're gonna have the dog park on the future agenda item.
Oh.
Yeah, that's coming, that's coming.
Okay, oh, okay.
That's not, no, this is the things that we want, that's, it's mandated that that's gonna come here, so, it doesn't have to be, but I could add it if you want.
Anything else?
Yeah, I haven't been here in a while, what happened to the skate park? I'm sorry, what happened to the skate park?
I can explain to you offline.
The simple answer is it, it fell off the council's priority list.
Okay. I just haven't been around.
Rally if we wanted to put.
Rally if we wanted to put
No, it's fine.
Are you suggesting skate park in that area?
No.
We'd all be dead, wouldn't we?
I have a question, and are we still like going to be engaging in community outreach events? Because we haven't done one in a really long time, so maybe that could be a future agenda item. I include like, you know, Valentine's Day is around the corner, we missed that, but we used to be pretty, Shannon and I were on that committee and I felt like
Be interested about one every quarter and I, I can't remember about that.
May I suggest, um I think that that's gonna be part of our work plan and we'll actually have it as a discussion item today. As we work the plan, because it's definitely part of our job.
Wonderful.
So um, okay, uh and by the way, we have these future agenda items, if we decide we want to, you know, consider putting them onto the work plan, it's the chance, you know, to to, you know, to hang lots of them. Okay, so I'm closing session on the future agenda items and now we're gonna jump back up to work plan.
Your work plan, Commissioner?
Okay, so hand it over to Sam.
Um yes, Commissioner, so what you have in front of you uh on the agenda report um was the, the report actually, we're taking the work plan today, we're gonna finalize it, vote on it and approve it. Um and take it to council in the joint meeting, which I believe is on the thirteenth of November? Yes, uh so that joint meeting, um where the commission will lead with council and go into work plan. And any other discussion that you'd like to have in part of your commission. Um so the process right now for today is I've distributed um the previous work plans from the two different commissions, two separate commissions, now you are one. Um I am gonna be in the process on the big screen up there, in the process of drafting a work plan. So everything there is gonna be moved or changed, nothing is written in right now, I might blank it out, I'm not sure. Um but you have two separate work plans uh that were distributed to you. Um for reference, this is the format that we're using, uh what you see on the large screen. After I finalize the draft, I'll I'll move it to the, to the Zoom, I believe, yeah, I think I can go on and share. Um and uh and then we'll finalize it, vote on it. So what is in the report are bullet points of items, which will be discussed today. Bullet points of items when we did the brainstorming for items to discuss and put on the work plan uh at our last meeting in November. So that's, that's what these items are and that's for further discussion. And once again, those are just topics as written that came out of that meeting. So I I brought that together for everyone so they can reference that. It could be discussion, it could be put on the work plan, um but but that'll be up to you as commissioners. So I'll report as much as I can, try to get it as correct as I can and then at the end, we can correct me if I've made any mistakes. Putting together a work plan that we can vote on. Okay, questions?
Did you want that to say twenty twenty four?
I haven't changed, I haven't changed anything yet.
I don't know.
I I I was in the process of, I changed the title and I changed the date, but I didn't change the year, yeah. No, I didn't, I didn't change anything below that.
Um I have a question for my fellow commissioners, um the formerly of the Arts Commission. I noticed the date on your work plan, prior work plan was twenty twenty one, twenty two. Do you guys have a twenty two, twenty three work plan? I think so.
No, I think we got, I don't think we did. No, that, I think he found out about about merger, if I recall correctly.
The merger was probably on and and just put it on pause.
So as early as twenty twenty two, you guys knew that you
We were told, yes.
Okay. All right, so um
And we
When I looked at the list When I looked at the list of our brainstorm that we did at the last meeting and I looked at our existing work plans, which is the twenty one, twenty two for arts and then the twenty two, twenty three for park. Um there's minimal overlap, I mean, this is a pretty fresh um list that we, the brainstorm list. So Director Hernandez, how how would you like, what proposal would you like? For example, did you pre-enter these items into that sheet?
No.
Okay.
I didn't know which direction you wanted to go. And and what I can do is I have both of them open. Um and so what, if there's something, I mean, overlapping things or like community outreach or or something like that. Um and then I can just bring that over to the the working one that I'm using for now, this one. Um and then we can expand it from there. So the the subheadings are the goal, projects, assignments, target date and city priority related to, and the status, which we won't fill in today.
Yeah, at this point, assignments, we can't do that, right? We can't really create subcommittees.
You, well, you can't assign them to commissioners, but you can assign them to certain things. Community outreach may be a a goal or a project. Um assignment may be visit the uh summer concerts. Or go out to the walk, uh art walk in downtown or something like that, I mean.
I always thought that projects um category was misnamed because
No, the way the Parks and Rec Commission did it was the assignment was the whatever it was. And then the subcommittee was listing the people that were involved.
Okay. Uh if if we're gonna use this form with goal, projects, assignments, target date, um at this point, I don't think assignments makes any sense. So maybe project
You can go to this one. It it is, uh the Arts Commission, the Public Art Commission actually had this format where they had deliverables rather than assignments. So we can use this format as well.
I think it's good for us to classify our projects, you know, project area or project type, you know, whether it's outreach, whether it's, you know, creating something, but then um the 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 deliverables need to be pretty specific. I like seeing deliverables.
So would you like this format or do you want to decide on the, on the headings first and then we can go from there?
Um I I think the the format of the Public Arts Commission spreadsheet is um, I like that better because it's more specific. And uh there, actually, there there's no column there for, except for the very last one, leadership, is that where you kind of said your subcommittees? Okay, so we we can't do that now, but um, you know, so that that column may be useless to us right now. But um, but I think we, let's start with there, let's start with that format. Because it already solves one problem for us, which is it's it's, it it's specific about expected deliverables. The impact, your leftmost column, which is called key objective, that's where you, that's kind of like the class of activity, right? Um and so that's important to have because that's at the highest level, that's what we're gonna tie to the council goal, along with the impact. For example, let's just look at community outreach, community outreach, the impact is continuing increasing community involvement in the arts through educational programs and art events. So there could be community outreach that's more art focused, there can also be community outreach that's more culturally focused, there's community outreach that's more um park activation focus, et cetera, et cetera. So under community outreach, we could have four different impacts or five different impacts, right? And and then as you move to the right, for each of those impacts, now you start creating your deliverables. So um I think that's um, I think that's a very sensible partitioning of activity.
So we'll just use these headings then?
Yeah. Yeah.
If that's good with the commission, I'll do that.
Um again, the leadership, we we can delete that column for now. Or leave it empty in case we come up with some other thing. Quite simply, we already have, you know, I see, I see parks as activation of physical spaces, arts is all of our arts. Recreation is activation of our programs that could relate to either parks or arts. And then culture, that's a huge bailiwick for us, so you know, we can, we can derive some specifics there.
And Jay, do you want to go, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go through like the deliverables? Because I'm looking at the old public arts work plan and there is stuff there that I think we would take off just because things have changed and it's a
So would you agree with the, this proposal to just quickly scan the old ones? And see, okay, obsolete, obsolete, uh something we might want to continue forward. Okay, let's just do that, that inventory. And that, that way, um Director Hernandez, you can um since we're using the arts one as the template, you'll just be deleting things that that we think are obsolete. And then you'll have to add in, copy and paste stuff from the next one we look at, the the parks, the park one, the old park one. And bring stuff over and we'll
One thing, Commissioner, is can you
The two-step process, first a color process and then So Would, one of you like to, for history's sake, like to guide this part of the discussion? Pastor, would you like to do that?
I think the three of us could do it, I I can kick it off.
Okay.
Um I can, I confess, I can't really read that, but I can, I can work off my hard copy. Um so um I think continuing the search for opportunities for community involvement, everyone is an artist, that was the series that Commissioner Moore was talking about, um that we would, we, I think we would like to continue. Since we're now a joint commission, I think I would propose getting rid of hometown Haiku, but what do you guys think?
I agree.
Okay. And you say because you already did it or you think it's played out or why would you want to delete it?
I think we did it, we did it. We did it.
Yeah.
The commissioner, who was a poet and so she Yeah, she was a poet. So we, we did that.
Okay.
Establish, establish a community arts council, I don't think we need to do that any longer since we're now a joint commission. Um the partnership grant program, I think we still keep, um you guys agree?
Yes.
And then the PR outreach, which I think also includes the brochure that Commissioner Moore created, so I think maybe we add the brochure there and then we're done. Right. At least with editing that part.
I have a question for you. Okay, right now we're just calling, we're not adding, let me make a note for myself.
I have a question about the partnership grant program.
Well
But they're calling, okay, I just wanted to understand it.
Do you want to explain any of the programs to us now or do you want to hold off for later on?
That's to you, I can quickly
You have a question?
Yeah, the partnership grant program, is that, just give me It's a call for art Yeah, exactly, it's the lending of sculptures and in that
No, no, it's not what we just said, because we don't pay these artists.
Well, this Is this like the stair painting thing or no?
This is like the sculptures. Okay, and it's like a, it's a loan program where we, they loan the the item to us for two years.
And they get a stipend.
They get a stipend, yeah. Okay. And then we can opt into buying, purchasing it.
Thank you. And what we could probably do too is on the status part, we could probably just make that all blank right now because there's nothing that has happened. Well, in twenty twenty four.
Okay. That means haven't yet, what, for the hearts? Anyway, okay.
I'm just, I I'm I'm just trying to be expeditious.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. And expanding existing public arts footprint, um I think that's more, that's more YouTube, you guys want to talk about that? The walking and bike tour?
Well, we made the map, we made the brochure, um we never did any tours.
So ironically, I think that um Arts of Los Altos
Might have used our brochure as sort of a template to create theirs, because ours looks very similar.
Yeah, um so, but we we always had that intention of creating something like that.
Well, we have the brochure done, we just never
We have a brochure, yeah.
Yeah, because we have some new, um, we have some sculptures that, well, one hasn't been moved yet. And we got some new ones, so we need to add those. That's enough.
So
So is that stain or going? Stain. Okay, thank you. That's part of an ongoing effort. And then the gate, the possibility of gateway art, you may recall um a few minutes ago that we were talking about parts. To be, um and that went before the city council and I think the city council chose not to go in that direction. And so we're kind of, um I think we we may want to, I don't know if we want to revisit that or not, maybe take it off for this year. Because I think the direction for the city council was, was not um in favor of a gateway art sculpture.
They weren't.
Is that accurate or was it that they weren't in favor of having the same style of art at every entrance? Was it totally no gateway art?
Their definition of gateway was never identified as far as I could tell. Location, style, artist, nothing, they gave us no direction.
So what was the heart?
Didn't like the art, it was the metal.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
Was it intended as gateway?
Yeah, yeah, because we felt that it was emblematic of Los Altos, you know, that we're like a loving
At every point, you have the art. Yeah, they
Was that because they didn't like the art or because they didn't like the concept of gateway art?
No, I think they didn't like the arts. Yeah, that's all.
I don't think we should eliminate the 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 pursuit, you know, we're gonna create our work plan, they can always slice it. But if we feel strongly that gateway art expands our public arts footprint.
The thing is, I think we didn't really have a lot of submissions that reached consensus. I mean, there were, so we spent a lot of time on this, so that's honestly why it was really, I don't know, I personally was was upset about it because we spent a lot of time Yes, and the Smithsonian adopted that piece, just to talk about how art is subjective. Some city council members didn't like it, but
Yeah, so, I mean, it is, yeah, and we, you know, so, but I, you know, if it, if it's something that our commission, I mean, I I think, I mean, a lot of cities are sized half gateway emblems, whether it's art, whether it's a big tree, whether, you know, there's something that, you know, is emblematic of you're coming into our city.
Don't we have that, don't we have that, don't we have little bonsai trees on the little concrete blocks?
We do. We do.
They, that's That's being gateway into our city. So, you know, that is, that is true, is whether or not this commission wants to, uh for example, I know two of them that are empty right now, the trees died and they, they're not there. So it, does this commission
Refresh.
Can you please send me that information because we just put new ones in last year?
Oh, well, okay, that's all.
Yeah, they should be fine as of last year, so.
I have a question.
So, well, it's, you don't want it, you don't want our city to have gateway
It's not that we don't want it, it's just
I do not think the city council is gonna approve anything that we pick. Because I don't think we're gonna get what, what is a gateway project that they think is a gateway project in the budget that we have.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could just put it on the draft and let them see what they say.
Yeah.
So it's fine, I mean
They'll, they'll Fair guidance.
Question?
A question?
Yeah. So it, I don't know where the question goes, but we have those granite planters at each entrance of the city. And so if we did gateway art, how would that work with the granite planters?
We're not gonna solve that now.
So I'm asking people to think about that as whether or not you want to discuss gateway art or if we want to talk about
We were shooting different entrances, so it wouldn't conflict with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm fine with it, I'm just saying how's it, the granite stain.
I'm seeing here is establish Los Altos as a destination for experiencing public art. Of those four bullets right there, um I see the bike, walk-in and bike tour. I see possibility of gateway uh art. I would probably be more affirmative in how I present that bullet, rather than explore the possibility, just explore, you know, gateway art or make a proposal, propose gateway art. And that gateway art could not only be just, perhaps we have to re-formulate that project to not just be, here's our proposal for gateway art, but here's our proposal for the community outreach that we do to help design, to help choose gateway art. And then it's a lot harder for the council to say no if we've shown tremendous community upwelling and faith, upwelling in favor of a certain kind of emblem for our city. Imagine if we did, you know, an out, community outreach to help select amongst five candidates of style for, to, you know, here and there, we show that we've got a couple thousand people that are back. It, now I would have stronger, stronger position with the council.
I mean, we were selected as an advisory I mean, we were selected as an advisory committee, so we do represent the public, right? And if someone's, if someone's like strongly opposed to a, a piece, we've had people come in that are strongly opposed to pieces.
No, I, I hear you, that we are an advisory committee, but part of our formulating our own representation of what the community thinks is we can do, community outreach, and we did that with the dog park, right? The, the group was all, all about, you know, we could, we could have chosen to do dog parks, but we felt we. Now, it's in the community to get enough people to sign onto that, in order for us to feel strongly enough to push for it. All, all I'm saying is.
If they say no.
Yeah.
And then the call for public art, that's, I would discuss that and that, um, and then.
Is art without walls something specific?
Companion to the partnership grant program, so the partnership grant program is going to be more robust, but the call for art, art without walls, that's kind of the same thing, it's the sculptures. So. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I got that wrong, but.
Is that a trademark or something that you're invoking?
It's just, no, it's not a trademark, it's just, it's the, what's, what's. What the arts council has always called it, art without walls, it's an art out in the public.
Okay.
And then discuss potential relocation artwork. So one of the things that we had discussed was moving around different pieces. And I'm almost thinking that we don't do that. Part in part because if we're moving pieces around, it's going to consume city staff time and resources and it's probably just as efficient to just find new art for new places, okay? Okay, great.
Yeah, just that one bad dancer, I think that we do need to move that, because we've already said that we would, right?
Well, okay, so that's a good question. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that here. So, we can.
Are you saying there's one instance where something does need to be moved?
There's a list, they, they, the public art commission had a list of items that needed to be moved, relocated, however. Um, and we've taken care of that, pretty much. I have to look, there are a couple that are in question though, because the artists. That was it, but we moved everything that we.
Dance, the Shall We Dance is like the ballerina, and we had talked, we had talked about putting it in front of the Dance Los Altos um, group, and I think there may, there's some complication with that.
Yes, sir.
So I'm thinking, either way. Or we can table, but we definitely table this, I think.
But that's an operations issue, isn't it?
It's just an operation.
It's not.
Just to finalize that, now if you're talking about relocating art in the future on a public basis, maybe you should leave that on, but if not.
Okay, so art conservation stewardship, key artist contacts.
Wait, before you leave footprint, when you say footprint, are you being intentional? You're talking about physical. So for example, uh, collab with, with the arts Los Altos, is that increasing the city's footprint?
No, we were, I think, again, um, Commissioner Moore tried to correct me, but my recollection was that we are have an overabundance of art in North Los Altos. We do not have an overabundance of art in South Los Altos, and that has been brought to our attention, so expanding the footprint was.
That, that blank space, make that a specific, deliverable.
Okay, okay.
I have a comment on this. So, for me, it's about balancing the artwork. Not just expanding, expanding one thing. If you want to accumulate more and put it around the city, you can expand your artwork by just having it in one location and a whole mass of it. But what we're talking about is balancing it within the city, trying to have a, a fairer distribution of artwork throughout our city. So that's.
So that it's not just.
It's not even diversified, because if you say diversified, then we're talking about variety more in a lot of people's minds. If the intention is to get more artwork, more balanced in the city, those are two things. More artworks, one, balanced in the city is two.
So, I think we have to be kind of.
We can't balance without more artwork.
Yeah, because we can't do that.
I think I understand what you're at, what you're suggesting, what I would work, I would not use words like fair, I would not use words like. What you're actually basically saying is you want to, you want, we want to, we want to install more art throughout the city. Throughout the city. So that, what we could do is deliverable, is we could say that there should be a pub, piece of public art. Uh, you know, um, per, you know, on a, it's called, you can do things per capita, right? Population based, you can do things per acre. You can do things per distance, like a park within ten minutes of everybody. Right, that's not a goal, a social goal that a lot of cities have, ten-minute walk. So we could do, we could create a goal like that for our public art. That everybody in our city is within a fifteen-minute or twenty-minute walk of a piece of public art.
How about we expand or get rid of just, discuss potential relocation of our works and clear, add your point, Chair, that, um, discuss potential, um, art in South Los Altos and other areas that are not in North Los Altos?
My, my generic goal that doesn't, that do north and south, doesn't create division. Absolutely. Yeah, I know, but what we could be is very specific, which is everybody in the city, right, regardless of where you live. They're within a certain walking distance.
Mile? Instead of walking distance, I don't like using walk.
Yeah, because it's discriminatory.
Very discriminatory, because people win wheelchairs and all that kind of stuff. We're not allowed to use walking. No, that's why I would say blocks or.
We can get the terminology from CPRS, they will give us the absolutely ADA compatible, culturally inclusive terminology for the standards that they're establishing for physical parks, because this is a physical thing. We want everybody to be close to art, because they live, install, everyone lives within. Yeah, so I'll, that's something we can figure out, we can figure out the language right now, we, we want to make sure that everybody in, in our city is within a reasonable distance. Yeah.
Art near me program.
To public art.
Art near me?
Yeah, art near me. Art near me, no, Casey, they just branded, branded it. Art near me.
Thank you for catching that. Um, so the one on the very bottom, um, the website updated with new sculptures, that is something that we'd love to see happen.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, I think that's under the next category, I think it's just a matter of, I, I, I just don't like working in word tables.
Art conservation and stewardship?
Yes.
Do any, do either, do you want to take this one? Want me to continue? I'm happy to continue, but. Okay, so, the staff to manage loan sculpture insurance and loan program, that's just kind of an ongoing.
That's ongoing.
Yeah, yeah. Like a, we have to keep that, explore restoration possibilities, so there are. So, do you think there's any more though, that you wanted?
We didn't do the last one, we didn't do the last most expensive one.
The musical gamble?
We didn't do musical gamble yet, have we?
That's an, that's an ongoing thing, it's just ongoing.
Yeah, let's just put ongoing, that sounds good. Same thing for monitor recommended document actions, update on art loan agreement, that's all, you know, kind of maintenance stuff. Catalog all art in public spaces.
Did that one.
Yeah, we, we could update it.
I think that's ongoing too.
We just need to update that.
Yeah. The update art loan agreement, uh, is it possible for us to number these goals, rather than a bullet?
Like prioritizing it?
No, just numbering them, because I want to be able to say.
Say one, two, or five, or ten.
Rather than have to read, update loan argument, I go, I want to go to.
Can I number them?
You can.
So we can include this under bullets, but I will number them from now on, just for reference. It's not prioritizing them, it's just to reference it, okay?
Update. With new sculpture.
The subordinates then would be like letters. Or one point one, one point two.
Actually, it looks like there's numbers in here too.
Before you leave this, art conservation stewardship, is the impact statement still correct? I want to make sure that that impact statement is, um, every single one of the bullets that you have fits under that umbrella, key artist contacts to ensure.
I mean, I'm sure we could tweak it, I mean.
What does that mean, key artist? Yeah, the impact has to be, um, uh, an, 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 uh, an outcome, the general outcome, which is to, excuse me. Is the goal really to ensure a positive end-to-end experience with our city programs for artists?
For artists, but it's definitely for the community, and I think the thought was that, um, you know, artists, when they will go to our website, and, and as well as the community, they want to see their art there. And, and then they want to know that we're taking care of their art, they're reporting back to them and following up with us. And we're, we're, um, working with them on the loan agreements, so, it's, but it's, I think maybe we add community in there, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I just, starting with key artist contacts to ensure, that, that is, doesn't even make sense to me, I, it, it's not a complete sentence.
How about we say ensure a positive end-to-end experience with our city's art programs?
Start, that should be the sentence, and then you could add a second sentence, so start capital E for ensure, a positive end-to-end experience with our city art programs, um, including relations, or interactions with artists. Staff and community.
Oh, staff and community, yeah.
Including interactions with artists, staff, and community. Or you could say the public. I think community is all-inclusive, so. Wait, what, what happened here?
It just pushed, it just pushed it, that's what I'm saying, word tables are difficult.
It's art, it's not just art programs, it's art, um, installations and programs, right? Because here it's, it's, it's both, or is it just the, the actual installed art?
Well, it actually is everything, but I guess we were thinking like, you know, art without walls, we kind of thought was a program, but it's.
Okay, then don't use program here, say cities art installations.
Why can't you say cities art?
But there's also, there's, but there are also then the, um, community art engagement events.
But that's under a separate, that's not art conservation and stewardship.
Yeah, are you okay with that? Okay.
We'll create a separate, um, key objective for that.
Is it programs and something?
Art installations.
Instead of programs?
This is about making sure that our art, it, um, has been properly cataloged, um, is maintained. Is amenable to the, to the city, you know, to the, to the community. So, this is about, this is our archival, it's like, this is, we're, we're a museum in a way, right? We have art.
We're stewards.
We're stewards.
I think, I think that a lot of this impact section, it can be condensed. I don't think, I think a lot of it is, and, and maybe it's going to change as we move ahead.
The impact statement is like a mission for that particular objective.
That was just my opinion. That's fine.
I think it, it's, it can be descriptive and then the, the deliverables are.
A lot of it's about taking care of the artwork and inventorying it and managing it. I feel like it can be said in a much more concise.
You're talking about this, you're talking about the, the deliverables should be tight. I agree with you on that.
Okay.
That's the.
I just had it backwards. So, um, I, I think it can be more concise than it is.
Last key objective from the public art one?
Wait. Commissioner Morris backed up, it, it, on the, uh, the column called deliverables. Um, she's suggesting that can be tightened up.
Tightened up quite a bit.
Take, pick one and suggest what you're think, what kind of wording you're talking about.
Well, I think, and I could be wrong, and I'm looking for clarifications, I think a lot of this is going to fall to staff. A lot of the maintenance of it and the, um, inventorying of it, is that correct, or am I wrong?
The maintenance, maintenance of it, I mean, it ultimately will fall to staff in a way, but it'll be contracted and paid for through the art fund.
Yeah, Harry finds the restoration committee.
Okay, so.
The commission does do a lot of work on this. And as far as the installs, we oversee it staff-wise, but that's.
Up with the direction of the work, it's the commission, and then staff goes off and execute. So, it's, it's important, however, for example, when you say website updated with new sculpture information, that to me implies that somebody in this group is going to update the website.
We cannot update websites.
So you need to reformulate that.
But you need to communicate to staff, hey, this needs to be.
To get so far, I, I'm sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to cut you off. No, I'm just saying, so far what we, what we're reviewing, nothing has changed. So the staff is already doing this, for this thing, so. If something is added, I will interject on that, we're staff.
Saying website updated with new sculpture information, the role, the deliverables from park are to suggest and react to any proposed changes to the website that staff will implement.
So I guess the way it's worth is, we can, we have on occasion drafted little descriptions of the art and provided with the photos. Um, and, but we don't touch the website, so.
So we just, we just need to come up with a simple sentence, which is our deliverable commitment, or what our role is on that task.
So, the reason I like it kind of vague is because I feel like it gives us more flexibility, so that if the staff wants to write something or take the photo, you know, it's, we're not breaching an obligation or commitment, I mean, I, I'm, it's worked pretty well for us, I, I don't know, Manny, do you want to?
You bring up the, the parks one, there, there's an easy solution to this, just bring up the park one. They just put work with staff in front of every single thing. Put that in front of every single one.
So work with staff turns our website's updated.
There you go.
So this part, where you say update loan art agreement, do you guys actually do that?
That's what I think. Preface anything that, that we, it's, it's just really important that council see, what is the actual work that this body is going to do?
And that's what I'm saying is, do we actually do that?
We actually go and we, 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 last time we did this, Monica and I called other cities to find out what are, what do they do? And we report back.
Okay. So you're doing it?
Yeah, we were doing a lot of it, but that commission was a real working commission.
Update art loan agreement. To me, I could see that being like staff going, no, we do.
Insurance, that's a, that's a, that is a staff thing, you know, we don't talk to the artists about insurance, but it's also, I think, important to keep it on a deliverable so it gets tracked.
Let's just make sure our verbs are accurate as to what we are named, because what I don't want. I don't want council to either accuse us of overstepping, which they tend to do, or we are overstating what we're actually going to do, that's something that staff can do.
So the, maybe what we could do, if, if Manny thinks this is helpful, and you agree, um, is we do, we add in what Yawn said, work with staff, work with staff.
You see our work plan, it, it says in front of every single one.
Unless there is something that we're creating. We don't work with staff.
No, it's like, it's almost every single one.
So the work with staff to manage loan sculpture, insurance, and loan period extensions, and then update art loan agreement.
Work with staff to update our loan agreement.
Well, yeah. I don't know, I just think this can be leaner and tighter. I still, I, I still think this.
Well, let's, let's, let's go through it. Point the, point, point.
So, wouldn't you put loan sculpture, insurance, and loan period, the very first bullet point, under art conservation? Wherever it is. Oh, so second one, sorry, I don't have that other one in mind, okay. So that one, and then when you scroll down, you have the other part about update art loan agreement. It seems to me those kind of need to go together.
You're saying just switch their position?
Oh, figure out a way to make it more unified. So much of this is about maintenance, it's about making sure that it's being cared for, it's making sure that there is insurance on it, it's making sure that we are taking care of it, you know, the way we're supposed to be. And I feel like it can be stated in a slightly leaner way.
Okay, I don't see how sculpture insurance is. I mean, you're.
Wouldn't you update your loan agreement and your, to me, those go together, no?
That's how it works.
Well, you've got update art loan agreement, and then under that you have artist needs to provide proof of insurance through the life of the art. Work with staff to manage loan sculpture, insurance, and loan period extensions. Wouldn't you put insurance together?
John did all that.
But do we even do that? Do we even work on that?
That's what they're saying.
Yeah, we keep tabs.
Then, then it's only monitor. That's all we do?
Yeah, pretty much.
So that's how we should simplify it. And then, then we can do what Commissioner Morris is asking, which is, what is the litany of things that we monitor that staff is doing?
Because that's all.
List those in one bullet.
That's all it says.
I don't think explore restoration possibilities goes in that list, though. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, I'd agree.
And cataloging all art in public spaces, that doesn't go in that?
No. I think it's own bullets.
So that's why I wish these were numbered. So what we should do, what you're recommending, and I'm, now that I'm hearing when you said you have no clue, as exemplifying that you don't actually work on it, that we should just monitor. That's our role.
Would you agree?
Yeah. Okay, so the things that we monitor are, I'll get you a second.
Where is this going to be? Is it under here?
So there, we're going to monitor. We're going to add into there the loan sculpture, insurance, and loan period exten- extensions.
It's very hard for staff because a lot of these artists do not get back in touch with them for months and months and months.
I mean, do we step into them?
Well, it just falls by the wayside, so we keep tabs on it.
We, we have been known to call artists ourselves, yes.
But that's what.
I like about this monitor part. It says, this commission monitors.
Yeah, monitor and work with them.
Really clear to follow.
Yeah, say, then I would add, I would be more proactive. I would say monitor and assure progress on these items, for these actions.
It's not even just progress, it's, it's up to date, isn't it? It's keeping it up to date?
Well, assuring.
A lot of active and up to date. A lot of times we're not.
Okay, let's, let's give somebody else, Yawn?
You see this right here, like, why don't you say work with staff to manage loan sculptures? And then put this, 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 all under there.
That's what I'm doing right now with those.
Why don't you just bring all with the little this right here and just throw it all in.
That's when he's doing that, he's moving it down.
A little bit right there under work with staff?
Yeah.
I think we're getting really pedantic historically, like, city council has not cared about our verbiage at all.
But they don't read it because it doesn't give meaning to the.
I think Parks and Rec might have a different relationship with the city council. Historically, I feel like the art commission, they never, they don't. They never even come to our meeting.
They, yeah.
We're going to change that, you know.
I just don't think that they're going to, like, I don't think they're going to see a word of.
I want this to be written so that they actually do. Then when they show me that they're not reading it, I'm going to be all over.
But this city council will read it and they will pick it apart.
They will.
Their lawyers, they like that.
Sorry.
They like to, you know, have those clarity points there.
Better than vague though.
Okay, they don't want vague, no. They don't, they really don't want vague. They don't want vague. Shut us down.
So we can eliminate this one? Oh, that's going to be funny. Okay, good. Okay, and then this is gone too.
Is it? Did you put it up above? Okay, all right, good.
You see Manny at the top of the, the black bullet point? Just make that as prize for us. Let's say manage loan, loan sculptures. Right here, just kill this from here to here.
Insurance should be its own bullet. Insurance and loan period extension.
It's already, so just kill it from here to here. So delete this and delete that. There. And then put a colon and then you're done.
So here's my suggestion on that one. Work with staff to manage loan sculptures, then say, semicolon. And then say. Monitor, colon. And it's not lowercase on the M. And now you're going to monitor, do you guys really, do we research, establish, and document current values? Do we do that? Do we do that? Research, establish, and document current values of city-owned sculptures. Do we do that?
It's work with staff.
If, if.
Monitoring.
There's data on that, yeah.
So can we just say monitor and then the bullet becomes current values of city-owned sculptures?
Because we know how much, well, we don't even know how much the heart's going to cost us yet because no one's told us. But we don't, we do know how much something costs when we get it as a loner because it says.
Yeah, so I would suggest making the first bullet, we're going to monitor, and each of the bullets are going to finish that, that verb phrase. We're going to monitor this, we're going to monitor that, we're going to monitor the other thing. We're going to monitor the current values of city-owned sculptures.
You're saying get rid of the word research. However, do you guys research it? So we don't want to get rid of something and they do.
They're going to monitor it. They're going to monitor.
We.
Monitoring requires surveying, research, interviewing, that's how you monitor things. And then also reviewing. It's all implicit in that word, monitor. If there's anything more that you do than monitored, please tell me what that is.
I think that's sufficient.
Okay, and that's vague too. Do you feel like that's sufficient? And you also monitor. No, maybe instead of saying evaluate lessons learned from placement of sculptures, right there, what you're trying to say is, is there something to be learned? Do we, we get feedback?
You see the black bullet point? That applies to every single thing. So why don't you say work with staff to manage and monitor loan sculptures, colon, and then all this stuff falls under manage and monitor.
So manage and monitor. I like that better.
I don't know why we put a semicolon there.
I like that better, but here's a question. Evaluate lessons learned from placement of sculptures? For me, that's its own bullet point.
Yeah, unless you call it, unless you call, we, unless one of our jobs is going to be to monitor community feedback on placement of sculptures.
It's all work with staff, so staff might do that.
But.
Okay, that's why the, the black bullet point, like, rules everything below it because that's the main.
Call us and say, this statue's being ruined by children, this.
I'd like this to be its own bullet point. To, to me, the evaluate lessons learned is its own bullet point.
Evaluate lessons learned is really vague. What does that mean? What are lessons learned?
You sit down and you talk about, what did we learn about this one?
It's a totally separate. Yeah, like, sometimes we realize that this is not a good location for a sculpture.
I get that. I'm, I'm just saying, you learn.
But I don't think of it in that category.
Well, that sentence by itself doesn't make sense with the action verb manage and monitor. Doesn't make sense, obviously.
These are all, all these sub-bullet points, are these all loan sculptures?
Those are the sculptures.
Well, the national. Now, monitor placement of sculptures. I like that. I like that. Monitor placement of sculptures.
Make them still viable for that.
Monitor loan sculpture, insurance, and extensions, or should that be loan extension?
Well, I, okay. I think it's important to spend time understanding what works and what doesn't work. That's why I say I think that needs to have its own bullet point.
But it's still all under our loan sculptures program.
But isn't it, even if we buy sculpture, we want to do that?
But that's not, that's different.
Okay. That's why I'm saying it should be its own thing. Okay, go ahead.
Well, this is stewardship. This is, this is. Okay. And then the, the next one is, monitor best practices of other cities, R E loan programs. You don't need to report on the.
I'm getting confused. When you put monitor in a colon, that doesn't mean it applies to every single thing.
Yes, it does. I mean, as long as you phrase the, 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 the English correctly, it's.
Yawn had a great idea, though. Work with staff to manage and monitor loan sculptures.
And then you can just put whatever you feel like underneath it, and you don't have to have it tie in with the same. It's not a continuation of the sentence.
You see what he's saying?
You can do that.
I think it would read better.
You're still, you're still going to have a colon, right, Yawn?
Yes.
So manage and monitor, then when you, when you do use a colon, you also create a, a list that have. Yes, it is.
Is that what we're saying?
And then get rid of monitor.
Get rid of, now put a colon there, and so manage. So now we have to put verbs in all of those.
Assess current values.
Stay out loan sculptures.
So it's just work with staff to manage and monitor.
And so if you don't know, you're going to try to go by your house and install it, that's after a colon.
Yeah, yeah, to take out the loan sculptures and then all the.
Yep. Do we have areas where it talks about what we own and what's loan?
Not in this, not right here, but up there.
Okay, and for the best practices bullet, just say best practices of other cities.
Yeah, best practices, and then work with staff to manage and monitor proof of insurance. Manny, if you could just take out the report on, on the one above that, so it just starts at best practices. Just take out, artist needs to, just start at provide. Or proof, or just start at proof. Yeah, just start at.
I, I, I think it's going to look better if you put work with staff to manage and monitor sculptures. Either it's loaned or whatever, I just think it's going to read better in the.
Okay, but not all of our art are sculptures.
So then the art.
Something, because I think when this.
It's the public art. It's implied in the, yeah. I, I don't, I think we're getting really pedantic, honestly.
And guys, we haven't gotten to parks yet.
Yeah, I know.
Actually what we need to do.
Yeah.
We need to do this as well. Explore restoration possibilities for various city-owned artworks. That's its own thing. That's fine. Catalog all art in public spaces, ongoing, yep. Manage Los Altos Community Center and Council Chamber Arts Programs.
Typically, we do two calls for art for the community center, and we just went through one of them. And so I think status is we're doing a call for art now, and we probably want to do another one in the fall.
Okay, so Manny, why don't you duplicate that into two or make two sub-bullets under Community Center Art Gallery? One is what we call it, what a winter call for art, which is the one we just did.
What winter means to me. I mean, it's the future fall.
Yeah. Yeah, there's not a tradition to win.
Is it like every six months, or, so every six months?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we want to only do it twice a year?
The problem is that we, it takes so long to get everything organized and approved, et cetera, like, we're, we're almost done with winter now. And to hang, and I mean, I think other people probably use that wall space, right? So we have to coordinate with.
No, no, nobody. Stuck up for six months. So.
What is that? What is the person?
Bullet is winter call for art. And what is, what does winter mean to me? What does winter mean to me?
And then the other one.
The other one would be, maybe. Second call for art, T V D. Let's just, let's slate it for fall because that gives us.
Yeah, we were supposed to have that already. So we're behind, we're way behind. I'm not sure we want to say that this is, I think we want to say.
You can't do it by fall?
We could definitely do it by fall. I'm thinking maybe just, what do you think? Leave it.
I was ignoring the strike through on that. The character.
So, so maybe we could say.
Oh, I don't even know where your thing is. It's not coming up. When it's in tables and Word, it's all messed up. I just ignore this, please. If you could ignore the strike through, I'll fix it afterward. This is totally formatted weird.
You're thinking that for the status to be called for art for the community center, we would say March 2024 and September 2024.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, got that?
We're going to do. Status. Yeah. March and September, get that?
Yeah, March and September.
Yeah.
No, and status, yeah.
Yeah, March.
And 2024.
And September 24.
It's 2024, so the whole, it's just all one year.
Mural video docent presentation?
We never did that.
Do you want to do that?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, take it off. Commission program signage, what is that?
Okay, so. Yeah, oh yeah. So, so the banner there refers to like this banner that you pull up that we use at the farmer's market, that had the commission's name and a bunch of pictures of the art that has been installed. I don't know if we want to do something like that for this commission. We could if you, if you wanted to because now new commission, and then the brochure was created, and the brochure definitely needs to get updated. And the question is, do you want to have the banner as part of the work plan and decide in the future if you actually want to do it?
I would, I would pull, I would pull that action item, commission program signage, pull it out of this key objective, and I would probably call it, put it under community outreach. And it's part of our branding.
Yeah.
And I totally support that. We need to do a lot more of that.
Sounds good.
You mean as opposed to our handmade signs, Jimmy?
They can be handmade signs too.
No, the banner is really cool.
And I feel like, I also like vertical flags.
Yeah.
Because they don't take up as much space. We should have a couple of different formats.
And it's free standing, which is cool. There was a change with the city council chamber when they got remodeled, so they really, we can't put anything up there. But, but, but what's going on is, is, you know, there is a call for art for staff. I don't know if that goes on here or not. I'm looking at art for city council chamber.
So we don't manage that?
We are not allowed to put anything into the chamber because it's all.
Acoustic.
Acoustically coordinated.
So we're doing outdoor steps, moving up.
Okay, so. Okay, so what we.
It'll easily dim down.
Just say, we'll, we'll keep the deliverables. Yeah, the deliverable needs to be modified. We're going, we're going to.
Art for the stair entry?
Art for the stair entry of the city council chambers.
Doesn't that fall under the normal art stuff? The call to art or the whatever?
Los Altos Community Center and Council Chamber Arts Programs.
Yeah, but it's part of the overall art.
It's our contribution to the.
But it's not going to go back to the artist.
Yeah.
It's going to be an installation.
An installation.
So why don't we say this is like?
Changes regularly.
Well, we, we're not going to do that because it turns out we cannot make revolving art programs in the interiors.
Though I know that, okay.
So we're just going to, we're going to, you know, maybe focusing on, we're focusing on the exterior. And is the chair, the stair embellishment, the only thing we can do on the outside?
Yeah, so maybe it might be, you know, sculpture or something like that.
So maybe it's exterior instead of entry steps. You wrote entry steps.
Yeah, because that's our delivery.
So maybe it's.
This is a specific delivery.
That's what's being done this year.
That's what we're going to do this year.
Okay.
I think one project is enough for this year for the chambers.
For status, do you want to put ongoing?
No, no, let's. Status is in progress. We need to get going on that.
Already, yep.
Okay, what's the next? Is that it?
Public art?
Is that it for public art?
Is that not the same that you have?
It ends there on mine that I had, I printed.
Okay, so just, can you add more, more cells so that we can bring the parks one over? Or do you want to just work from the parks draft? Because now we need to change columns then.
Yeah, let me, I know, that's what I'm expecting, that's. You can merge them later. You know what, I won't even take it.
Yeah, the labels.
There, we'll say one, two, three, four, five, six. Manny, you can just merge it later.
Yeah, but we need the title to correct, there's only five here and there's six there. You can only merge them if they have the same form.
Let me see, I'll see if I can cut and paste it.
Manny, thank you so much for your patience with us.
Well, I'm prepared, that's why.
He did all his zen meditation.
I know, thank you, I know it's out there and it's. It's sacrificing your evening, so thank you.
He's preparing on.
It is close enough.
When you need, you probably needed to, um, enter it, paste it in that first. Spit right there, if you paste it there, it'll follow the same column, um, format, but, you know. You have to paste the whole thing and then the following. Now you have to do it my way.
So, gee. Yeah, I think we're ready. And I'll add colon for everything like that, alright? Increase park facilities and recreation program participation. You can just tell, like the nature escape.
Well, we haven't finished it yet.
I thought we did. Guys, what's next? Yeah, we just have to. We didn't do that two years ago?
No.
Oh, not the ribbon cutter, yeah. No, that'll, that'll be us.
So I would suggest on key objectives. Key objectives are like our major areas, I would suggest that, um, and that. Increasing park facilities and recreation program participation is too broad, we need to divide them. Uh, increasing park facilities, um, participation or usage. And then another one, another area called the increase on recreation program participation. I mean, this, this is like a huge lump, it's too big.
Okay, so it's what I put here?
So the first one, call it increase park activation. Park facilities activation, cause it includes, um, parks and gyms, right? Although we don't, when we, when we, um, when we speak of our facilities, so, so we. We include the two middle school gyms, don't we? Okay, good, so park facility, um.
Can we use a different word other than activation, cause I think activation is unclear.
It's what?
I think it's a little unclear as to what that could mean. Is there a different way that we could describe that, increase park facility use?
Yeah.
We shove everything in.
For me?
But we just shove everything into it.
What, what is the problem?
What was wrong with the way it was?
It's too broad.
Isn't that the point? That was the point we did this, just so we can put everything into it.
But we've got other things, we wanna have key objectives and we wanna have more than one.
We have two.
Right, so maybe, can you scroll down real quick so we can see what the other areas are? Cause initially they weren't called objectives, they were just categories, they're called goals. Can you scroll down to see the other park stuff? Facilitate public process for capital improvement projects. Okay, so you, you're against just dividing this into two different things so that we can better categorize the, uh, the goals to the right?
Well, what's the point?
To have better organization.
One is tactical proven, the other one's everything else.
No, 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 I'm talking about that one. Now create, divide all those actions into two categories, one that's focused on parks. And parks and gyms, and the other one that's focused on programs. Cause they're distinctly different.
I, I agree.
It's just outlining, that's all it is. Are you following me?
I'll just do whatever you tell me.
Okay, so under, under where you, you changed the words there?
Yeah.
Can you create another, um. Another one called, below it called, um, increase participation in.
So another key objective.
Another key objective.
Another key objective section.
In recreation programs. Even in staff, don't you do that? I mean, there's, some people are focused on the parks and facilities and other people are focused on programs, right?
Aren't those, aren't those programs helping the facilities?
Yeah, that's just incidental, but.
You have to define the program itself.
Uh, I think you guys will see when we do this, okay, yeah, go ahead.
I can hear you.
You guys will see what's gonna happen in a second.
Well, we're gonna totally redesign all these, I mean, but not all of this is, uh, not all of this can, can work anymore the way, the way we're operating. The constraints that we're now facing with subcommittees, which we cannot have anymore.
We're not allowed to have subcommittees anymore.
Not allowed.
Well, that happens.
You can't.
You can have one subcommittee.
For what?
You can have one subcommittee. We're gonna be ad hoc.
No more subcommittees, we only have ad hoc committees.
Yeah.
And they've gotta be very limited in tenure.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's important for us to, um, slice this down.
And the new city council.
Our, um, parks commission and city council directed on this. All those, you can watch the videos to see all the conversations. It wasn't a smooth process.
Some less, I understand.
I don't either.
Okay, thanks.
I hope they didn't remind.
Okay, um, so you're gonna, you created a new, uh, so this was on facility, so here, let's look at these items. Um, community outreach. Park representation at city and community special events.
I just thought, there's sort of this one that general category of like show up, right? So there's, there's the attend ribbon cutting ceremony. Do the community outreach, you know, which means we show up at the farmer's markets and at the special events and that sort of thing. To me, they kinda go together, like.
I almost, I almost feel like community outreach, just like in the arts program. In the arts aspect, it needs to be pulled over into the left column. And then there's a whole bunch of things that we do for community outreach. It has nothing really to do with the actual physical parks and gyms or the programs, it's pure marketing and we need to do that, right?
Yeah, I, I, for me, I'm thinking there's a piece where we're asked to volunteer for events. And I think that's what this first one in community outreach is kind of saying. Is that for this one, it says, you know, ha, show up, represent park at these events. And that, that to me is, it also includes the movie and, and then this ribbon cutting. I think if we're gonna keep these, put them together, it's basically show up, do, be there and talk about what we do and. Involve the community and, and be involved.
I get that.
So, and yeah, and as far as where it falls under, you know, the titles, that's a different thing.
I mean, you have to.
Yeah, that's different.
So up there, that's where we.
Key objective.
We need to add our activity, you know, activities more related to parks, cause right now the community outreach up there. Is focused around, the three deliverables are focused around our arts charter. So under that same key objective, which is community outreach, we need to add deliverables that are.
I agree.
Recreation and parks and cultural. Um, deliverables related to community outreach.
Yeah, I think you're saying the same thing. But, yeah, I think we're kinda getting to the same thing, I wanna see it, you know, combined. You know, in a way that says be there. You know, we need to be there and do it, it's part of our work plan is to attend events, to be there and participate.
That's fine, but.
I don't care where you put it under the keys thing, I'm just saying.
What I'm suggesting, um, Teresa, is that showing up, you have different values, right? Showing up can be, you're doing marketing, you're doing, you're, you're focused on talking with people, you're explaining your programs. But also showing up can be your pure labor, you're helping to move.
Yeah.
Buckets and things like that, and that's a totally different objective.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think what it is for me is they're both usually staff driven, that says we need help. And can you be there? And that's the one I'm trying to say we need to identify individually.
But I believe that the park commission should do community outreach on its own.
That's separate to, and that aligns with the art commission thing we just worked on.
The residents.
And that works with what we just did for the art commission stuff.
Yeah, so we need to not have an art section, not have a park section.
So we kinda went tail wagging the dog on this, so instead every time on these impacts now, just put it, just put P A R C. On every single time it says art, and then we can put everything else and shove it into the, the bullet points.
Right, if we're not gonna do a call for park, you're doing a call.
So.
Yeah. Is that what we're saying or not, instead of saying?
That's, that's show up to events, that's, that's not gonna help the council understand what we do. If we look at community outreach, it's written here, which is park representation at city and community special events, take that and slap it up there. And, you know, we're.
If we're gonna put it on the work plan, I think we need to be committed to it.
That's right.
So are people committed? Well, we say, well, are we committed to it, I'm asking this question. Yeah, I do too, I'm making sure we understand, this is our work plan, we're saying we're gonna do this.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that last year, our attendance at various community events as a commission, and I'm always thinking for park. Was terrible.
It was terrible.
And we got criticized for it, so.
We did?
Yes, because it was always the same couple of people that showed up and not the others. So we need to commit to, Teresa's right, we need to commit to it, everybody needs to feel an obligation to show up to various events.
Only if we're putting it on our work plan.
It's part of our charter.
Okay, well, I mean.
This is a charter issue.
Wouldn't you agree, community outreach is a charter of a commission stuff?
It's a very definition of what a commission is, chair.
It's only on weekends, I can't be there, cause I have work before my weekends.
You should.
First work at Thursday.
As long as we drop that a few or a couple, we're good.
And I can tell you that I was one of the people that always showed up for the art ones.
Well, and I was gonna say, and, and hanging art is one also.
It's hard enough because we have two commissions, but we have double the presence and the work, right?
Yeah. Okay, okay, well, what's, the community events, work with staff and partners to plan new multicultural events, that's under programs, don't you think? Yes. Your event, the staff of city events are programs, it's not just classes, so put that into the programs.
Do we do that, Manny? Are we actually doing that? To schedule performing arts in various parks and cities?
You're asking me what you actually have done in the past or what you're willing to do in the future?
Yeah, I'm asking you, are, is it something that we are allowed to do? Is that point there, work with staff to schedule performing arts in various parks?
No, we're not there, we're on the one above, work with staff and partners to plan new multicultural events.
Okay, well, whichever one, are we, are we even allowed to do that or doesn't staff do?
Halloween events. Uh, the Halloween movie came out like that, there's, no, uh-uh. You're, you're, we welcome ideas, that's the whole thing, but no ideas have come out recently.
There are certain activities, events, for example, Halloween movie, that now is a tradition, it happens, right? But at one point it wasn't that.
Right, no, I get it.
The commission basically pushed for that, right?
Okay, just like.
So there might be new events that we come up with, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, i- is it something that this commission is willing to work for in the next year, or are we status quo for that topic? I think that's the question.
And our plan, you guys, whether or not we're gonna do this.
Since we just added the word, the descriptor cultural commission, that we need to have at least one, that we pick one. That focuses on culture, we can partner, we can partner with a private group to do it.
We did just do a cultural thing too.
Yeah, but, 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 yeah, but they ran it entirely, we did nothing.
Staff recruited them, yeah, staff.
So for that, for example, one thing we could do is bring the Juneteenth celebration for this city, bring it more in-house. That is an example, I'm not saying that's what we're doing. No, 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 they, but they would absolutely love to have partnership. I'm not saying bring it in-house, more, in other words, greater, greater relationship, that's just examples.
Okay, anyway, a good example, okay. Okay.
And then go back up to the top. Now, schedule performing arts in various parks and facilities, we don't, we don't ever get involved.
That doesn't suggest that, yeah.
I would suggest on performing arts, our role there is volunteer and support. Staff, um, uh, per, you know, uh, city sponsored parks, uh, performing arts events. Cause that's what we do, right, we volunteer to work.
Would you, don't, don't we help with the summer concerts series?
We, yeah, we just volunteer.
We can volunteer to.
They, they want Jamie would ask us input on the bands.
We don't do it anymore.
Oh, you don't do it anymore? Did you see that here? I'm sorry.
Is the commission involved in selecting bands for any event?
No, Jamie just wanted our input, so it's working with staff. Said which ones were popular, which ones weren't, remember?
When the deal happened.
We've done that like, I don't know, every year until COVID happened again.
Well, I think, I think we have, it's just input.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't even call that working with, I mean, we could ask.
A whole plan. You guys just bring it.
Once again, though, yeah, is that something you wanna commit to, putting in your work plan for the next twelve, twelve months?
No, because we don't do it.
Where was that one? Where is it?
It's the third one.
I, then.
I see, he said you wanted to change this one.
Be, I would say that our deliverable is to be responsive to staff to offer input as needed for performing arts. We wanna, we wanna be available to you, but it's, you know, it's not something that we're going to take charge of.
There was discussion, and I, and I think this is where this came up with the performing arts, was, it, it's just not worded very well. About, um, giving input of different groups, bringing different groups to the table. And I interacted with Bridget and gave her, was it Bridget? Jacey, somebody, uh, and gave band names and, uh, groups and things like that. We also talked about maybe bringing in some groups, like for different events.
Yeah, like the Chinese here, dragon stuff or whatever.
Yeah. But we're not.
I would say be responsive to staff in select, as they select. As they select. Performance activities or performing groups or whatever, performing groups, is that what you call, is that what it's called?
Performing art, uh, performing arts.
Performance activity, that's fine, okay, go back up to the.
You just wanna eliminate the nature escape thing, cause that's just part of community outreach.
It's not part of our work plan, it's what we're supposed to do, and the ribbon cutting, the nature escape.
What is that?
I thought we did it already.
Absolutely, in all honesty, in all honesty, that would go for anything, if we install a new, a new playground, whether. Otherwise, we would ask the commission to be there.
Ribbon cuttings, well, it's the whole thing of.
Community special events.
Community special events, we did.
Yeah, you put it, you put it in the community outreach already, really.
So I think it can come off our work.
That's what I mean, you should.
It never made sense. When is the projected date on that?
Uh, we, we're trying to squeeze it in before summer.
Okay.
I never knew what this one was. Dollar trip? Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, it was, that was, that was, that's a very important thing, it was to. Yeah, no, it was, that was, that was, that's a very important thing. It was to. There was a time when we really didn't have a formal subsidy. Um, my understanding is that staff does do some subsidy, don't you?
We don't have any program listed. We formally did before COVID, but it, it's kind of went away with the new setting of budget. Oh, please don't push on that. Yeah, i- if it breaks, it's going to be a hassle.
So right now, if, if somebody cannot afford to pay, what happens? They just get turned away?
We would, we would probably, I can't, I can't answer that. I, I haven't seen that yet. If it comes, I think we would make a consideration and we'd evaluate it. Okay, so, uh, there was, or there is a program, it's just not utilized.
Not what?
Utilized, nobody's using.
Do you guys still get the driving program for free?
Yes, that one we did. Oh, yeah.
That's for seniors, right?
Yeah.
The go-go one, what is, is it through?
I, I just made that up. I literally did. That was the program is we'll reimburse you if you drive.
Yeah.
And it hasn't, it hasn't burned us yet.
Okay.
So how does this commission feel about that?
Sponsorship thing, so that really was, it was Pete Daly and I thought you.
Yeah.
So if, I guess the deal is when we're looking at this, we have to think about, we don't have subcommittees anymore. We only have ad hoc committees. We can have one subcommittee, is that right?
Each person can get onto one ad hoc committee.
Committee, no subcommittees at all. Okay, so, so that's the question is where do you want to put your time and energy? And are you going to do this? So it shouldn't be on our work plan unless we're going to do, somebody's going to do it.
No, but that's not true. The commission can do it, right?
I think that's what she's saying, no?
No, she, um, what you're suggesting is that everything on our work plan needs to have one person that's willing to do it.
Well, one person who says this is my thing, yeah, this is my thing and, and drives it. And then, and then you can bring it back to the whole commission.
Does the commission, can I ask this question?
Not just one particular thing. We're not, well.
Does the commission want to do that this year?
I mean, not everything has to be driven by one person. It can be driven by the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it can, but is this commission right?
That's what I just asked.
Yeah.
Can you explain it? Yes, what I explained is that. Right now, if somebody wants to register for any, um, program, recreation program through the city, they have to pay a fee.
Yeah.
Okay, and if you're a resident, it's less than if you're a non-resident. But for a lot of people, especially workers who are allowed to have their kids, you know, here. They can't afford to sign up for after-school type programs, um, because they just can't afford it. So the idea was to increase the, it was part of our, we had a Jedi initiative.
Wha- what was that again? I don't even remember. No, I know what it means. But what, what did we do? Because those two things seem to be the same.
One of the things, what, what two things seem to be?
They seem to be under the same umbrella.
Sponsorship, he's saying they're different. Scholarship was sponsorship.
Where?
Where?
Two down. It goes scholarship program, Jedi initiatives, sponsorship. Sorry about that. So sorry, so sorry. Totally wrong.
Okay, so yeah, are all three of those things? Well, they're all, they're all Jedi initiatives. It's just that the, the Jedi initiative was, um, more policy oriented. So for example, three years, uh. There was an initiative to draft the resolution, uh, for equity and inclusion, which then bubbled up to the council. So the resolution. And then the council reaffirmed it in twenty, twenty-something rather. And then they reaffirmed it a third time with the Hamas-Israel thing that just happened. They keep calling back to that. So that's an example of more policy oriented. So Jedi initiatives was, you know, Jedi principles in terms of how we run our programs. To make sure that we're being inclusive. You just brought up at least two or three instances where I was not being. As inclusive as I should have in the way I was thinking of something with regard to Wakan. That's a Jedi principle. Gender, it, it spans a whole bunch of issues. And it, having this Jedi initiative mindset is as we're doing everything that we're doing, we're always having that in mind. But you can't have that in your mind if you're not educated about it. Specifically, the scholarship program was a project that, um, now. Vice Mayor Daly and I wanted to do, which is to work with staff to actually create a scholarship. So their kids did sign up and they could not afford to pay. There was some, there was some funds set aside to be able to issue scholarships. Just that simple.
So I have a question about this. Was any action taken on this?
Um, Director Leggy, Donna Leggy and I did several meetings on this and, and I had done some. Best practices through the conference when I, when you and I went to the conference. I went and did some best practices on how people boost. And she had this information and then she left and it died.
Okay, so do we want it on the work plan on this? And then the Jedi, just to give you something, it was, it. This morphed from me always wanting to have some inclusive. You know, each park having something that if, if a child was in a wheelchair or something, that they could get to a swing. So that we'd have at least one or two things in every single park that would be good for a child that had different abilities. You know, so different movement, whatever it was, adult could be included in that too. And then it, it changed into Jedi at one point.
I remember.
There was another, um, commissioner who would all, you know, wanted it to say Jedi.
It, it had each park, the one or two.
We went through each park and said, we could do this and this and this.
When did we do that? Twenty, twenty-one.
Who was the one who wrote that?
I wrote it.
Oh, okay.
Anyways, a lot of it had to be, for example, with corn place. I think certain elements have come out of it, you know, the decision.
Place, yeah, and we, we have reference to that when we replace our playgrounds, which is scheduled starting this year.
It turned into this massive recommendation and wish list.
Oh, good.
Through over the wall and said, please do some of these. Maybe it just needs to change to say.
Follow up with recom, with previous recommended Jedi reports to see how they're doing in each park.
I mean, where does, yeah, it's in progress.
It's in progress.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically been done. That, that report with regard to park usage has been done. And now it's up to staff and council to make recommendations accordingly.
But that was its own separate thing. The Jedi stuff is, is, I mean, it's ongoing. We just need to be paying attention to this and inserting this needs to go in. So do we want to call it Jedi? Do we, do we want to do the sponsor? I mean, you know, do we want to combine these two and say, how do we make things more accessible and inclusive? How do we want to do that?
I would, I would say Jedi principles instead of initiatives for the category. And then for the, for the, for the action or the objective, yes, we're calling it, thought we called it deliverables.
Yeah, deliverables.
What?
Deliverables, so you've got the impact.
The impact is to increase the, the inclusivity. Of our, of park usage. We're still in the park usage part, right?
Oh, we're going up to park usage now? I thought you were going programs. Okay, so it's park usage.
Yeah.
Jedi initiatives.
Yeah, to, to replace Jedi initiatives with, um. This is the impact, right, which is to assure. The inclusivity and accessibility.
How is Disney not super, Jesus?
I don't think it's like, G I, yeah, it's different. On the radar because it's all counts. Okay, so what, what's here again? Is it Jedi or are we not using that term anymore?
Let's, um, let's use D E I. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, so that people don't get triggered. You know, whatever.
Yeah.
The point is that we're going to, um. Apply D E I principles to everything that we do.
Yeah.
I mean, that's basically it. And so we're going to be vigilant about that.
And does that include the scholarship program?
That's a specific program that we can, you know, that's a, that's an example of how we're doing it. We're going to, well, I don't know. Do we want to push for something like that or do we not?
Do we need it? Does the city need that?
That's my question is, is, uh, Chair Formay asked, um, you said you worked with former Director Leggy on this. Did she say it was a need back then? Because to tell you, I was director the two or three years prior to when she came on. And the couple of years that I've been director here and as, since I've been here. There's only been a couple of requests for that other scholarship program that we had. So maybe that's increased and I still haven't heard anything recently on requests that they could not pay. So my question is, is it a need? Did she, did she see it that way?
What, what we had discussed was that. Because there are reasonable, and I can't remember the stats to be honest. There is a quantifiable number of Mountain View kids from underserved communities that come to our L A S D schools. And we focused on public schools. We didn't look at the private schools for kind of obvious reasons, although they offer scholarship programs. There was a substantial number of kids that you could say, this is in our population. This is in our population. And those kids are not showing up to programs. They don't register. So you're saying, is there a need because they're not asking? It's kind of a self-determined withdrawal because they can't afford it. They're not going to ask. You know, it's not like on every, um, Parks and Rec brochure, there's a statement that says, if you, you know. Ask about scholarship opportunities. If every single publicity, uh, brochure or website posting. Or email that was pushed, um, or even posted it to school said, sign up for, you know, swimming. You know, ask about scholarship opportunities. The, the feeling is, and other cities experience it, is when they make those kinds of statements known, because there is such backing for it. Then underserved kids sign up. If you don't put those things, you say, well, we don't have the need. And the reason you don't have the need is because nobody asks. And they're not going to ask because they're not going to ask.
And it makes sense what you're saying and, but then I'm going to ask, do we have the money for a scholarship program?
This would be a recommendation. Just because this commission makes a scholarship program, doesn't mean it to exist.
It has to go through muster.
Yeah, to get onto the budget and I'm not saying it's not going to. I'm just saying depending, because the scholarship money needs to be put aside.
Now, do you have a program like this?
Absolutely. So does Calwell though.
So why would they just use that one?
Because they don't know school there. They don't, they don't belong to the Wisman School District. They belong to L A S D. Right? And a matter of fact, this will even apply if we have a tenth school and it belongs to L A S D. That would be squarely in Mountain View, but those kids will not be funded by Mountain View dollars.
So the Mountain View Scholarship Program doesn't allow Los Altos kids, the Los Altos School District to do that or? I'm just trying to clarify what.
No, I don't, I don't know about that. What I do know is that, is that, um, if they're going to sign up for Mountain View. If the kid lives in Mountain View and signs up for a Mountain View rec program, sure, they can go ask for scholarships. But if they want to sign for an L A S D, I'm sorry, for a Los Altos one, because that's where their school is and that's where they can walk over. To Almond Park and participate in something because they go to Almond School, they can't afford them. Does that make sense?
Does, I just, so then the question goes back to the commission. Are you willing to work on that?
Question for the commission, if nobody has fire behind it, um, the commission wouldn't be able to approve any project that even one person suggested.
It's not that I don't have, uh, a fire under it for me. It's more the question of, um. I guess for me, it's a, I almost feel like it's a, a future agenda item, like to explore the financial part of it. It can be on the work plan here, right? So the, um, uh, because if we don't have the, um, the money for it.
Why don't we say work with. I would suggest, uh, a scholarship program, um, work. I would, tell me if you feel comfortable with this, Director Canadis. Where we would, the commission would explore feasibility, um, or best practices on scholarship programs. And, and come up with a recommendation.
Now, this is for resident.
Well, it, it can't just be for residents, right? Because our recreation programs apply to both residents and, um, and, uh, what do you call them? Non-residents.
So do we want to leave it? Open a scholarship program for camp, a scholarship program for after-school programs?
Scholarship program for, for recreation.
That just needs to be, yeah, I, I don't.
Okay, so, and then.
Needs to go under the second category, which is programs, right?
I just want to make sure we have it right and I'll pull it off. So this commission wants that up.
Do you really object to including in the work plan? Because see, this, this spans even potentially, if we create a for fee arts program, it, it could help me. And sign up for it. It's not just about basketball or tennis.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I am wondering if we want to put in a limited one where we just have a certain amount of scholarships.
We discussed when you explore it, yeah, I want to explore it.
Any kind of scholarship thing, you know, it has for income and ask for. Everything has to.
Okay.
We're not responsible for, for making sure any of our suggestions pass.
So everybody is okay with it?
Okay, nobody seemed to totally object, uh, do you want to object or no? Do you want to object?
By what? I, I, I'm indifferent.
Okay, um, back up.
Well, now we're on the summer thing.
So I think, um, is there anything else?
It's a summer thing. The summer, the summer thing, the summer, summer program.
Okay.
This is a Jamie, um, I should, Jamie will know about this.
Okay, so real, real quick, we still have the one more, the sponsorship program? Oh, okay. So the sponsorship program, I actually.
Oh, yeah, then, yeah, you would.
Charge Jamie, yeah. So the sponsorship program, to explain it, is it's just assistance from the commission to really take the lead on. Getting sponsorships for our, um, public programming, our, our group programming. Uh, because most of them are free. So our events, such as the concerts, the movies, stuff like that. We seek out sco, our, our sponsorships, uh, from businesses, from donors, whatever. Um, however, the commission may have you being in the, in the public more than some of us. Uh, as employees here, you may have more information on what businesses might be willing. Or people might be willing to, and you would work with staff to locate the, the sponsorships. And maybe even work on a sponsorship packet that would go out, maybe just in general. So that's where that came from, uh, because our free events, we like to subsidize them through sponsorships. That's it.
And that will go under programs then as well, but.
Yes, it would. So if, if the commission's willing to work on that this year, I'll, I'll move it down.
Are you guys going to fund it? Point to potential donors?
And once again, it's not necessarily knocking on doors. It's working with staff to get that.
Staff, but I'm not going to go.
There you go. And that's what this said. It says work with staff. So we're not asking you to go out and get that, but that could be a part of it if you have contacts.
It'd be. It's something about the recommend part. Work with staff on sponsorship program. Is what I think it should read. On sponsorship program for summer concert events.
Is it focused on summer concert events?
Yeah.
Right now, it's written up like that, so, um, we could change that.
Oh. Is that where you need the help though?
Um, for the most part, that's our biggest and most expensive free program that we run. In the summer. So that is the focus, uh, first, but our sponsor. In the summer. So that is the focus, uh, first. But our sponsorship packet, which we put together years ago, and I think Bridget is refreshing that right now, doesn't make it, doesn't make it only for that.
Okay, under, under this um, facility use, we wanted to go into our, uh, the dog park activation.
We say use?
Yeah, I mean, in, in the parks world, there is the use of the word activation, because what it means is you have a facility, it's there, and you're creating ways, i- it's not just about getting bodies in there, it's about figuring out ways to make it more.
More useful, educational, and artistic, and.
Um, whatever. To bring value. So it, it actually means um, not just making the dog park, but coming up with programs that draw people to it. Like, right now, there's a huge initiative by the, in the history region to activate the orchard, and that's the word you want to use, because you want people to become active in the orchard, just not just show up and look at it. So, I saw, it's kind of a word that, we actually want to educate people about it, because then they should, they should visualize when we say, we're going to activate the dog park. Oh, they're going to create cool things to do in the dog park. They're going to give dog training, or they're going to, you know, um, do uh, fun agility events, or something like that, you know, um, and those are activations. They're a term.
That's a term that I had not heard before, and I, and I, and so I was just thinking if there's a term, it sounds like a term of art. And if there's a way to e- explain it to the people, the public, when they read this, they'll know what that means more. So I'm just doing a quick search on Simpson, but.
So for example, dog park, if you say dog park activation in the impact, you know, activate, activate the um, the utility of our dog parks and, you know, bring, um, bring residents uh, to the dog park. Even just using activate, I feel like, like, activation makes me, I don't know, activation, I like the use of the word activate better than activation. Do you feel that way? I don't know.
Activate, activate the dog park.
I don't know.
Activate the dog park.
Hey Manny, how many parks, dog parks do we have now?
So, we have two.
One's a pilot, and one's temporary.
And, you know, we can activate in the, we can activate both, right? Not just Hillview. But I think we should, um, because it is staff, we should probably bite off one this year, just one, which would be, to be honest, in their current state, the McKenzie one has, and at least in my experience, more people, because it's got the dry area. Whereas as soon as we lose turf at the Hillview one, people don't come.
Oh, they don't go to McKenzie when it's wet either. Even though there's dry, because the dirt area gets so muddy, a lot of times they're not there on the rainy days and the really wet days.
Well, okay. In my experience, there are more people at McKenzie than Hillview these days.
Yeah, I think in generally, right. That's true, but, but.
Because the park itself, the, the renovated park, we don't know when that's going to happen, right? The, the final park, we don't know when that's going to happen.
Yeah, it will depend on contractor's schedule, yeah. It's, it's.
Probably not going to happen in twenty-four.
So does this belong to our work?
Probably will start, but anyway, I won't say that. I'm sorry.
Does this belong on our work plan for this year? Because our dog parks, one's a pilot and one's temporary. And so, is this something we want to do when we get the new dog?
No, I, this is, that's where I'm headed to.
Yeah.
I, I need, I want to hear, it's probably not going to happen in twenty-four.
I can't say that. I can't say that. I, I, I can tell you that the, it's in process right now. Once the plans finish, there's still a whole lot of process that needs to go with council approving one vision of the new dog park, and then construction plans need to be put together, and I couldn't tell you how long that is. Yeah.
Dog park activity through the system, something like that.
Yeah, this, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to get to activating the dog park um, in twenty-twenty-four, but what we can do is um, um, stay, monit- monitor the, monitor the, work with staff to, you know, monitor the progress of the dog, the permanent dog park installation.
Well, what were the dates for us um, monitoring the dog parks, you know, doing the data on it? That was, it had an end date.
Lots of separate.
That was already done, I think.
We just have to bring that back to this commission. Okay, we have to bring.
Well, that's a separate thing, and that has nothing to do with activation. So that's, but that's a separate.
Put that on our plan.
Above activate dog parks in the impact, say um, uh,
Just an item?
Yeah, different item. The impact is um, no, no, just saying, the, is um, to assess, assess utilization of current um, temporary parks, is that what we want to call them? Because they are. For pilots, current, there's only one pilot, the other one's done. This is not a pilot. Well, then, temporary parks, because they're temporary, or the, just the current dog parks.
One's a pilot, one's a.
But they are dog parks.
Assess, not access. Assess use of current parks. And the deliverable is to compile a report with the um, the surveys that we've done. So we have John's data.
Observation.
Observation.
Interview surveys, we did observations.
From power report with uh, observations by commissioners.
Right. Done by commissioners.
And, and the thing is, now we have all of us to do that. Um, so we need to tell you guys how we do that. It's very simple, and it's not statistical, but it's just observational. Um, so we can share that with you. So compile a report with observations that were done by commissioners, and, right. And then, so back to the activation of the dog park, I don't think we're going to activate the, these two parks now. So we're not going to put that on our dark plan, on the plan for this year. Okay? Agreed? Because I don't think it's going to get built.
So the increased park facility use and, and recreation program participation, we, which are two separate things now. We need to, yeah, talk about how we want to help increase this use.
Of the parks or of the programs?
Both. We haven't really done that.
Deliverable is work with staff. Be responsive to staff, work with staff, and work with staff.
How working, good.
Okay.
Is there something else?
That's the recreation, so.
These are, yeah, these are.
Yeah, you need to turn that all into one big block, increase participation in rec program, merge those cells. There you go. Um, but you have.
It's further up, when we were talking about the park facilities, right?
Yeah, but.
Park facility use, that, that's separate.
That is separate.
And we don't really have anything up in there.
Scroll up. Okay, so we.
It's just those two things that are in park use.
So one of the things we talked about was um,
One of the things is the arts, that you're doing in the pop-ups.
Yeah.
And so the pop-ups and art things that the Art Commission does. So that's going to be one thing, you know, we're all going to.
I don't think we've actually gotten to anything on this list yet, so you might want to review that, and see what else you want to add.
Well, the call for art is part of increasing.
Art engagement events should go in there.
We, we don't only use the parks, the other. That's what I'm thinking, we need to start using more.
Community center.
That's part of us, is recreation.
Oh, okay. Lots of park facilities, brass, concrete, building, it's all the same.
Okay, so that needs to go in here.
So art engagement events should go there, recreation pop-ups should go in there. In a separate box.
We already talked about art brochure, didn't we? Yeah. Okay, so that's done.
So, this is where we can um,
So we got recreation pop-ups?
And art.
Art pop-ups. Didn't arts have pop-ups?
We did not have pop-ups.
You did not?
Everything is planned. Yeah, but we, well, we have planned pop-ups.
Deliverable for pop-ups?
We don't have to pull them up. We can tell them.
What, what's your definition, what's a pop-up? I mean, like, what's your definition, what's that versus an event?
We actually wanted them to be pop-ups initially, which is literally, you go plant yourself in a park or a building, and you put up signs, and you draw people that are currently there to.
Oh, okay, okay. Like advanced sign-ups and everything. So that's a difference. It's more like spontaneous.
What we ended up doing, though, is stepping slightly into the planning issue, which is we would do, we did a, we did a um, an announcement on the city website. We're going to be here to do, to paint on the screens. You know, but the reality is, a lot of the people that came, they, they were just playing soccer over there, and they came over and did art, you know, did the painting with us, or whatever. So it was um, our goal was slightly different. When you're, we had the discussion, when you do the advanced sign-ups and, and everything, you know, number one, you're going to assure registration. So that's a huge benefit. But it's a very constructed attendance. People are going to come to the park for your events. What we wanted to assess and figure out is, can, if you organize a park, can you engage them in an activity that might. Then bring them back again, and in an impromptu way, to take advantage of the demographic that happens to show up to that park. You know, some parks may lend themselves more for sport. Other parks, because they have a building nearby, or a lot of concrete or whatever, they might lend themselves to park. Another one might lend themselves to an indoor activity.
Yeah, but, but we didn't do.
I think, like, the benefit of planning it for us was that we knew, like, how mu, we had the resources, we had the proper amount of resources. We also could make it a very intentional event.
Yeah.
Where, like, for instance, rock painting, I mean, I, you know, it's like we had to have a designated, designated number of rocks. But also, we advertised at the park. We put our flyers in the shadow boxes, so like, people that were at Grand Park knew about it, because they would see the advertisements, so then they would come, they were, sorry, I'm really tired. I don't know if I'm.
So can we combine these two? Can we combine art engagement and recreation? Yeah, um, pop-ups, can't we just combine them into activities or events? So that we have the art and we have the, the park-focused ones and the art-focused one? Right? I mean, that's going to be.
Engagement activities?
Yeah.
Engagement events?
Yeah.
Okay.
Edition art?
Yeah. Because we are parking, so now it's going to be whatever we do. Don't call pop-ups, because I don't think you have any engagement events.
So, so we're going to, we're going to make, you know, an art-related one? One, two, how many? One? An art-related event, we'll, we'll do, we'll probably end up doing, um, so for example, um, there are other kinds of arts besides painting, you know, there's, there's all kinds.
So an art-related event and a recreation event, if that works out.
That's a two-pack.
Okay.
Because there's going to be a lot of discussion to figure out what those are.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have a list of, we have a list of like, twenty-five different. I think it's like four, five. Is it nine?
No, it's almost, yeah.
Oh, my, yes. Do you need a bio break?
I don't know, I just park sale.
You have another action item that's going to take a while, too. We have the, the city council meeting thing, right?
Yeah, but we can't.
It's this, it's just talking about, yeah, this is basically, it'll just be a discussion on what you're going to say.
Who's going to be there?
The whole commission shows up.
Well, we try to all show up, but there's one, we have spokespeople. We have spokespeople.
So, that's.
So this one for the engagement events, I, I don't want us to get too prescriptive, that we're only going to have one of each. So is, I, can we do art and recreation-related events, and we're going to plan them?
Deliverables. We need to commit to them. That we're going to do one for a quarter, one for six months. They, they want clear objectives for us, deliverables.
Well, we're saying, we're going to do these things. We just aren't planning it out right now. The deliverable is, we're going to do it. We're just not planning, we're not sitting here and saying, this one, this one, this one, are we?
Can, can we ask? A council member?
Council member?
They don't attend the meetings.
Sally seems to be on, is that what you want to ask right now?
I asked specifically the, was our, um, no, she.
No, it's Jonathan.
It's Jonathan, no, I think. It changed. They've changed all of that.
Yeah, Nisa showed up a couple times ago.
Sally, can you speak?
Uh, yes. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, you're in.
Yeah.
So, may I ask a question?
Wait, let me just first say, I intended to be there in person, but I had a splitting headache earlier, and so I would not have been good company. So my apologies for being online.
The question, um, sorry, Councilmember Meadows, the question we have um, is the following. We're creating key objective areas, and then we're defining the impact of those key objective areas, the impact we'd like to achieve. But then we want to itemize deliverables. The question is, to what level of granularity does the council expect to see deliverables? And let me give you an example. If we say we want to create art-related engagement events in the community, and recreation-related engagement events in the community, is that sufficient, or do you want to see, we weren't, we're going to create an art-related uh, engagement event in Q two of this year, and a recreation-related event in Q four of this year. How specific is the council expecting our deliverables to be identified?
Those, those examples that you gave just now, I, I don't think, sorry to throw a wrench in it, I don't think those are standalone objectives. Your projects would have a sub-objective, if appropriate, to have an engagement event or have a whatever. But there's no goal, I don't, I don't see the utility in just having a goal to have an engagement event if it's not connected with something that you're working on and trying to deliver, so perhaps.
We, we left that, we left out part of that, um, Councilmember Meadows. Our, our objective is to increase park facility use.
Okay.
And then, we're talking about doing that by doing an art-related, doing art-related events and recreation-related events. So that's how we would increase the use. That's what, sorry.
Oh, okay. That helps. Yeah, that's tied to something measurable then. Um, so, I don't think you need a lot of granularity, but if you want to um, increase something, then probably what's important is the measurement. You want to increase by what? And to do that, you'll have one event. I mean, that's, that's it. I don't think you need a lot of specific granularity, but if you're talking about an increase in something, or a decrease, or whatever, then it's, it's kind of more important to focus on what that looks like. And to achieve it, you might do an event. But I mean, that's, that's as much granularity as you want. I don't, and I don't know that you want to define it any more than that.
We haven't, we, uh, when you, when we talk about increasing uh, park facility use, it would be difficult, I think, for us to say, increase by X, like, X percentage, or X number of people, because we don't have the facility to be able to count like that. So what we do is kind of indicative actions, like if we bring, if we hold, say, two community engagement events this year, two of them, one might be art-related, the other one might be recreation or activity, you know, recreational activity-related, then, we know the population that will get to come to that, say, you know, fifty people to one event and a hundred and fifty people to the other event. We can say we increased it by two hundred people, but that's, we can't, you know, that's not, we won't have, be able to compare that to, you see what you follow what I'm trying to say?
Oh, yeah, I guess, yeah. I guess you can describe it. So the way you're describing it is you're saying you're going to increase engagement by having the events, and therefore the people who are at the events represent the increase. That's what you're saying. So that's, that's fine, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, and that's probably.
The question is, do you just? Okay, so then you don't, do you need us to have them be time-bound?
I mean, I, I would just, you know, if you're going to do one during the year, I don't think you need to get too much more specific than that, or maybe it's one or the other during the year.
Okay.
Again, I would keep, yeah, I would keep it a little broad, but um, if, if you'd allow me, I, I've actually, I know I answered your specific question, but I've actually had my hand up a long time, because um, there were some clarifications, I could potentially. Um, there were some clarifications, I could potentially offer on two items, and I don't know if you're, if you want to hear those clarifications.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so the first one was about the gateway art, so that tells you how long I've had my webinar hand up, so, um, so. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Tell us where to go on the spreadsheet.
No, that doesn't matter.
Okay, go ahead.
He said way back in March. Oh.
Right, yeah, it's back to the. So the audio, please, just one person at a time, because I'm not, it's very hard to hear over this, again, I apologize for being online, so. You had a question, but nobody in the room reflected what council said about that gateway art, so I wanna try potentially to save you some time. The discussion at council was. That council didn't understand and couldn't recall that this council or any other council had asked for a reexamination of our gateways and art at the gateways. As some of you mentioned, there are those granite plinths. So the, where the discussion ended up with council. Was we weren't looking for gateway pieces. And what we just, and you, there was a recommendation from the commission to buy three hearts, because we said we hadn't asked for gateway art. But we were willing, uh, we, council said, by, the instruction to the commission was, buy one of the three hearts that you recommended and find a suitable place to put it. That is all the direction was, forget about gateway, don't propose it, we didn't, we didn't ask for gateways. We said buy uh, an art, and, and you can, we can go find that in the minutes if you need to, but it's very clear direction, buy one heart, find a place to put it. Now, if you, you know, now you can ignore my voice and propose gateway anyway. Yes, go ahead.
That, that applies to twenty twenty-three, should, um, are you giving us direction now, or can we propose it, and then when you review our work plan. Decide whether you wanna accept it or, or, or remove it?
It being what? I mean, council already said, and I.
Did you read that?
Yes, so I, I, I don't recall the meeting it was at, but the minutes should reflect. But, but I'm relaying what the decision was, which was. We didn't ask the commission to consider gateway art. What we took of, from the recommendation was, buy one of the three hearts proposed and put it in a suitable spot. So your work plan should really be. Um, you know, complete the direction that council gave, you're gonna have that heart installed somewhere. So that, that was one comment I wanted to make, and I wanted to make another comment about. The ad hoc versus subcommittees. The only real difference between an ad hoc s- subcommittee. And a subcommittee, as you're familiar with them, is ad hocks are time delimited. And can only last a year. The subcommittees kinda went on, you know, for a long time, so we defined ad hocks as lasting a year. And we did say that each commissioner should only serve on one ad hoc subcommittee, but the, the subcommittee could consist of more than one commissioner. So an ad hoc subcommittee is not supposed to be one commissioner, it can be two. I guess, and you have seven, so it could even in theory be three, but then you only have four other commissioners who could serve on another ad hoc. So I wasn't clear that, that you had that instruction, an ad hoc subcommittee only differs from a subcommittee in that it can only last one year. And this is not about, this is all about Brown Act, so council, although that, we weren't unanimous in that. Were very clear that the legal framework supports the decision. For ad hoc subcommittees only. And one person can be on one of those ad hoc subcommittees, and those committees can be. Two or three in the case of your commission. So I don't know if that was clear or not, or there's any questions, but that's what I've, I've had to say. Okay.
Um, we have a question from Commissioner Morris.
Yep.
So then, I'm just wanna clarify, make sure we all understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we're on an ad hoc subcommittee, when that ad hoc subcommittee's work is. Is completed.
Yes.
Then the commissioner can then join a different ad hoc subcommittee, correct?
Correct, but, but the, there has to be uh, action and motions and all this stuff made at public meetings. To show you're dissolving the subcommittee, and then you're not, you're forming another one, and who's on it and all that, so the composition of the committees is defined publicly, just so it's very clear.
Have any final questions for myself? Um, if the commission takes on an activity in whole, all seven members.
Yep.
Then obviously all seven members can work on that thing, correct?
In a commission meeting, in a public meeting, yes.
Of course, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So anything that four. Or more of you do has to be in a noticed public meeting. Manny, did I misspeak on any of that?
No, I think that's about it, thank you.
You're welcome, I'll go back to my little quiet hole here then.
Okay, so I think then the engagement events that we've defined are sufficient, and, and um.
Young said maybe put the S's in parentheses, if we want to.
Correct, a good idea.
The parentheses on the S's.
Yeah.
And then that way it's. Okay, um, I did think of something else for those, so, I think that we talked, so what, what city council member, um. Meadows was just saying about trying to determine if we're maybe getting progress with this, is we could, we, you and I, Janine, I think, talked about creating a document to get feedback. Did the art commission do anything like that, like? You did the rock paint, that's measurable.
Yeah.
So we could do a feedback loop when we do events, so if it says, you know, art related blah blah blah, with feedback. Process, including a feedback process.
Including feedback.
Yeah, is that, I think that would work. Then we're meeting the goal of.
Do we wanna be, um, do, do we wanna put an action word in there, like conduct, work with staff to conduct art related and recreation related events?
You know, like, see the bottom one, you know what I mean, like, there's no measurable there either, it's just, like, if we keep it.
Have a measure.
Well, there is no measurable there.
But.
Okay, sure, I mean, we're working with staff, I'll be bidding, like, but it's, we're driven by us more and then we'll ask for their support, so we don't wanna be using staff time for this, and I don't want the city.
And we don't have things budgeted just, at, at a bad time too, so it depends on when that comes, and when we can work that into the budget, so you're gonna work with staff any.
So do you think that by putting work with staff on these things is going to make the city council think that we're gonna use a bunch of staff time, and then we're gonna get mixed on this, cause we're not? We're gonna do this.
That's like five years, it says on every single thing.
I know, it's a different.
But we would have, you, well, you don't, I, I don't think it's necessary that you describe exactly what you're working with staff on. Work with staff on the art related events, if you're in a park, you're gonna have to work with us to get the facility, you're gonna have to work with us on a budget if you're gonna use money, so.
Absolutely.
I don't think it's necessary, yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, okay, make sure it's not gonna like red flag it, and they're gonna go, no, staff has too much to do.
Can you put a third bullet in that box, just gather feedback on all events? And that's something that we would do, we don't have to burden staff. With that goal.
Well, yeah, how did you guys do it, for your events, was it online?
No.
You had a form?
We had to get a form there.
Okay.
Okay, great.
I think we also, we did give people the option to, to take a piece of paper with them that had the link or QR code.
Okay.
They all go to.
You work with staff on that too.
Okay, well, great. That's what we need, okay. And then back to our list here. Oh, yes, we need a bathroom break, okay. Bathroom break, uh, seven minutes.
Be back by ten.
Did you mark the time for seven?
Yeah, be back by ten. All right. Uh, for everyone's information, I'm still recording. Maybe with the screen was that, it was flat, I kept looking over, couldn't see the yellow hand. So when I walked over, I saw the yellow hand.
It's just like, like ding or something, you know, be nice of it, give it an alert.
Yeah, cause when she left, she totally saw it, she was, she left. And so that's why I've been just kinda glancing over, but it was at an angle, and I couldn't see the yellow hand, I just see the black writing.
Are they gonna finally fix the website of, you know?
I know.
I hate to say it, it's got both park and art, and it's got all the old names and everything.
I got, I got, I received an email last week about it too, non-commissioners, uh, hey, I'm confused. There's all kinds of roads that lead to those.
Square.
Yeah, there's, oh, they should go, all those roads, click this, click that, it should go to the P A R C, but.
Yeah, it's like the end of the link page.
It's still there, yeah, it's still, and if you delete them, you'll hit a dead end on those other links, so, the problem is, is when the website was built, and I can.
Well, they didn't, I, I got it, no, you don't need to explain it, I understand.
Or also, it's an old website, years, the website was put together, it took this, and somebody retarded, I remember, just in my, my years of. I had some, we had one retarded, I only wanted one, and then she's like, you know what, I have a big workbook, I'm gonna hand it out to each of the department. Now the department's rebuilding pages and creating links, and then, they manage, they were reading, centralized, so they can, they bring it up, and there's all these.
I know we just.
Pages that that person did, so, there's a lot that's out there, dead end, just full dead ends, and, uh, what are they called, hidden pages? I like using hidden pages, certainly.
I created because it was.
So, now the problem right now is, to do all that and find all that is very difficult, the person said, we made a major change of our mission. Hunt all that down, so she's only finding it when people notice, it's, it's out.
So that's why.
If you find an, an issue, send it to me and I'll forward it to her, and she, she.
I mean, I just like Googled public art, and then I went to the.
Now, you can find it like that, if I'm following links that I know are there, sometimes I can't get the.
Like, there was just a, a link too, I just pressed on, it didn't work, what were they?
Just when I came over too, when I came over back to Parks and Recreation from, uh, Facility Magna, or from Magna. Um, I was like, what's, what's going on here with the parks and other person with mission, except, they, um, couldn't find. The, um, parks plan. I just couldn't find it. There is it, and then what I noticed, cause a lot of times when you have like a paragraph of writing, and you wanna put a link in there, you. Links using the word. But, well, you had to read the paragraph, for some reason the link was not underlined, but if you look at it closely, it was all in black, and the word was in like a dark green, but it almost looked black to me, so I was like. Wait a minute, I, I floated over, and it lit up darker green, brighter green, and I clicked it, that was the parks plan, and I said, if, if I couldn't find it.
Yeah, yeah.
The public can't find it, so we pulled it out and put it in parks by click.
So if I Google Los Altos, City of Los Altos Parks Plan, it says Los Altos Parks Plan, I click on it, and it says, I don't have access to that.
Oh, wait, that's good.
See, look, right there, Los Altos Parks Plan. And I click on it, it says.
Permission, commission page.
Which doesn't make sense, it needs to be a public document.
Now, it is a document, now you have to go rather than searching, yeah, if you go on the page, you go to Parks and Recreation Commission, or you go to commissions, under government, which has to go to the main page.
Yeah, you had a hard fight. On our server, on our server, sometimes it is this path, and that's what Google looks for, so that's a broken path.
Yeah, yeah, go on. Because, because it was, where is it, was it twenty-four?
To a bathroom, not the big bathroom.
Well, it's like, it's family bathroom.
Yep, exactly.
I'm here.
We're a couple minutes early from, uh, chair if you want to.
Our seven minutes up.
It doesn't make any difference, just call it.
Yeah, yeah, but the public may not be back.
Are there any members of the public on this? One, or? Council member Meadows. She's still, she's still on, I just kept her on as a.
Maybe if she's the only one, can you ask her if she's ready for the complete notes?
No, there is one other one. There's one, send us one.
That's two minutes.
Okay, you're good now. Seven minutes is up, nine fifty-nine, yeah.
Going back, um. So if we go to our list, it's on the agenda. This is the, our brainstorm results, let's make sure that we're considering these, which is in the staff report, I will. Park work plan press.
Okay, so we've, we've, we're through to the art brochure, we've already done that.
Is it, is it up there? Is it up there?
Yeah, it was part of the art, art portion, yeah.
And art maintenance and schedule inventory was up there, right?
Yeah.
And calls for art are up there, art engagement events are up there, rec, well, we're gonna call them engagement events. Art brochures up there, um, I wanna jump to Dog Park Activation, we're gonna drop, I'm not gonna do that. And then, um, Lincoln Park Activation, this is, um. This was predicated on the idea that we're going to have water installed in that park. Correct, am I, am I correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what this was.
It was, it, once this park gets water, it can be used for a lot more things. Uh, because not only can you host events. Um, with, uh, and they become less expensive, for example, find art in the park, right, that's gonna be a big user, it's always a big user of Lincoln Park. And it, it costs us money, costs everybody money to bring water into the park. So by having a source of water there, you make the, the event more feasible, okay? So that, that's just one event, you could have other events, but also, once people are in the park. And they have water available, you can have more activities in the park, you can attract people to come, and they'll have a source of water which. Lowers the hurdle for usage. Well, aren't you hooking water up in there? Yes. Okay, so, it's, well, the question is, then what, we, should we have some, something specific to increase the usage of that park, no more than we do any of the other ones?
Right, I mean, ribbon cutting, everybody's gonna show up, we're gonna have squirt guns and squirt everybody.
So, so let me clarify my.
Specific to having water in the park?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, okay, so, the water that's going in is, it's going to be a drinking fountain, we're actually selecting it right now, that's up on my project manager's priority list, so it's high. He's working with Rotary to get that done in two separate locations, now I don't know that's gonna be the final plan, but that's what we're working on right now. Um, so, assuming that that continues forward without any issues, we'll get two drinking fountains in there that are bottled waters. Um, so you're saying then that with the drinking fountains that we have here, or the hydration stations as we call them. Um, that we would activate it any differently than we have in the past because.
That we would activate it any differently than we have in the past because most, just from my, in my profession. Most of the time when you're talking about activities, uh, you're looking not only water connection, but you're also looking for restaurants. And that is something we don't have in that park. So the, the, the thing that makes that event of the art in the park so unique is they bring in. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear and understood because if you make a big plan to make events in Lincoln, you still don't have restaurants unless you.
I was thinking about this, but I was also thinking about just general park usage. Right now, it's one of the least populated parks of, in our city and we're.
Like, that's one, I, I mean, I grew up here, you know, one thing I never heard in my life, let's go to Lincoln Park. There's absolutely nothing to do there.
But it's used.
That, but that's my point, Young, is that we can do things to increase its usage. Host events, you know, host activities, engagement events.
Well, that's part of what we're gonna do.
Also, Commissioner Wong is not here, but one of her big things was she wanted to potentially have it be a stop on the adult fitness route. You know, put an adult fitness tool in the park. Add more benches so people go and sit and read. I mean, there's so many things you can do to activate a park to make it more pleasant.
So loud, it's not awesome to do any of.
Terrifying question, because I, just so everyone knows, I, I may or may not have a conflict. Are you talking about North?
You're gonna, you're gonna have a conflict because John was already.
You referring to North Lincoln or South Lincoln?
But the water is going in the North Lincoln.
I'd like to ask, like, why is this part different than any of our other parts?
We're not putting any water in South Lincoln Park.
That, that's, we're discussing with Roger. I don't wanna get into that project right now, but yeah, they're.
Make sure we're talking about the same thing, with south of Main Street.
It doesn't matter if there's water or no water, in my opinion. Why would we activate Lincoln Park any differently than we would activate any of our other parks? Because it's, our, our goal is to increase park usage. Isn't that goal for every single park? And if we think one part needs more attention, then we do it for that part.
That's what I'm saying, it needs more.
Yeah, but we would assess that of all of our parks then. In other words, it's on the work plan. We don't have to call out Lincoln Park specifically.
I guess you could keep it that way. I just, when we have.
When we talk about.
We'll be saying, apply DEI principles, everything we do, including Asian people. It's like, it's already included, so why, why add it?
That's what I'm thinking. Does anybody else see it differently? I think it's, I think it's on the work plan. And then we skipped a bunch on this list and jumped to Lincoln. We've got community education webinar. I don't even remember what that was. Does anybody?
Something that spawned a COVID or something.
This was like, not too many meetings ago, we made this list. Do you remember?
I don't, I, I, I just, I wrote it down.
That's true.
Let's put a, an asterisk by that, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not firming our work plan tonight, we're just.
No, you, you are.
We're firming it. We have to show up at the.
Show up with an approved work plan at the next meeting and this, the joint meeting and the joint meeting will be before your next meeting.
Yeah. So how about the community garden? That's a done deal, right?
No, the community garden, now the community garden is another project that's on staff's list and we will plan it and bring it back to the Parks and Rec Commission. I, I know that was an interest of this commission, I remember that one at the meeting. That was an interest of this committee, uh, commission to get involved in. Uh, you're gonna be involved at that level though already. Is it something you wanna actually add to the work plan? Because you're gonna see it through the regular process.
When you bring, when you bring things back to us through the regular process, does that show up on our work plan?
It probably shouldn't. I mean, that's something that's already going through. Um, but it's, this is work for all of you to do.
Get credit. Let me be very trivial. How do we get credit for having done something if it doesn't show up on our work plan?
Well, on the work plan is, uh, be, uh, be an avenue for city. Projects to go through the public process. I mean, that could be an item and that covers dog parks, skate parks. Okay, that's fine.
Our next point is public process.
There you go.
I would just put public process and then the deliveral being, being that, I don't know how you wanna say it. Yeah, conduit, there you go, that's. Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Uh, what about public outreach? Community outreach, maybe?
Key objective, which is to participate in the, um, public park, public process. For all city projects, for all, uh, parks and recreation projects.
Sorry, my eyes are burning, it's getting late. I don't know where I'm at here.
Arts commission is involved in such public processes. That is working on a program related to the arts mission and you guys have to become part of that process.
Usually are instigated.
They instigate it.
Yeah, yeah.
We started off, I did. Um, all of our like activity. By, with your money or what? No, with our. People don't understand why. What else? Our purchases.
Art. Park updating or rehabbing or?
Yeah, I could go down the whole list of CIP items, so I'm thinking maybe we just leave it to, uh, improvement project, park improvement projects. Would it sound good? Okay.
Make sure you put the art in there, I think, right? Cause it's different.
What did I say? I already forgot. I just said it two seconds. Okay, that's good enough.
Okay, then that takes us down, does anybody know rooftop public park I do?
That's my thing. So my thing is that we have the absolute, we have the worst, one of the worst ratings on the peninsula and possibly the Bay Area that I haven't done. Terms of, um, park space per capita. And we're a landmark city. Don't have any way to expand our city unless we go annex some unincorporated areas. But that unincorporated area is. The only other way we can also acquire land is to buy land on the market, which as we know is.
No, we can do it. We can buy.
Ten bucks an acre. Not, not saying it's not possible, just tough. The other way we can do it is people bequeath land to us, in the old days, there are all kinds of laws now that may or may not. Bottom line is, where are we going to have space? People are going to be building houses, developers are gonna be building housing in our city. And most of them are probably gonna have to pay parking lot fees. So that doesn't get us any parks. It allows us to improve our parks. It allows us to maybe develop pocket parks around the city. It allows us to improve facilities on park land. But it doesn't give us more green space. So the only other place I could think of to do that is on rooftop gardens. Tops of parking structures, tops of, 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 uh, housing that the city owns. To create, uh, public access. So it's true that somebody develops a private building and they, they, whether it's for rent or sale, whatever. They're not gonna, they may not want public people coming up onto their roof. However, there is precedent for that happening. But when the city owns a building, even if it's not administering it, it's possibly easier to create a public park on top. And so these parks can literally be living roofs with grass. They can be gardens, they can be basketball courts. They can be, you know. Reading places out in the, in the environment. There is a lot of, um, precedent in other cities to do that. So I know for a fact that, um, Councilmember Daly has mentioned this at council. At least from an aviation standpoint, you know, brainstorming, something he, he. Has mentioned there. Um, and it's a big deal for me. It's something that I have really wanted to do in the city and. Cause it's the only place we can do it. Um, so I wanna see if there's any way this commission can do some. Best practices research, you know, just go out and see what other cities have done. Um, to see how. We might be able to create parks on top of structure to increase. The per capita green space for our residents, because our resident count is only gonna go up, it's not gonna go down. And we just don't have enough camps. So that was the idea. Um, I mentioned it, uh, I mentioned it in the brainstorm and then I mentioned it in one-on-one with.
Like, maybe on paper, that seems to be true, but I've never seen a park like overflowing with people. I've never seen like the demand so high that. I, I mean, I live near Grand Park and it's empty most of the time. I don't know. So for me, it's hard to justify that. I think it's really an awesome idea. I love the idea of, um, increasing our green spaces and I think rooftops is like a really creative. Um, avenue to explore. I, I don't know like what.
One of the problems, one of the problems with, um, utilization of parks is that. Unless they're very close, unless they have huge parking lots, which is also a problem for us. Or they're very close to where people live, they're not gonna go to the parks as much. But if you look at our parks on the weekends, they're jammed. They're, they're busy.
Well, how about this? So I, I think we need to always be looking for new park space and as part of our parks plan. Is to do that, if I remember correctly. And so for me, it would be look. For new park space, include options that are as creative as rooftop public parks. And I think the challenge for us is, we aren't like the Salesforce building where we have a whole bunch of room at the top where they're gonna do that. A lot of the rooftop gardens are done as a trade-off for something that a builder. Doesn't have to do, but they put the garden on top of the building. And so I feel like we could push towards like saying. We'd like to see more rooftop gardens when buildings are built. But I'm not sure we can, as the park commission, say. Drive that as much, because we're not building buildings. We're not in the building, business of building buildings. It's really gonna be the city council. That's going to do that. Now, for this building, we could have talked about adding a green space on a roof, had we been thinking in that way. So for future buildings, you know, if we do build something.
Yeah, and also like I, 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 we hear this a lot, that, that Los Altos has like the lowest per capita of the park space as a city. But it's a really weird way of, like, like framing it, because like San, Rancho San Antonio is right there. Which is not owned by the city, but is touching our city. It's like saying Honolulu has no ocean front, no ocean, because it's all owned by the county. So the, the city of Honolulu has no oceanfront property at all, which is true, but it's not really true to fact though. I mean, we have San Antonio, we have like. I don't know, just go anywhere that way.
It might not be true on title, but like we have access. We have so many.
I do think we need to be getting more park space, so, and, I mean, I really do. And I think that's what, for me, the parking lot fee. Like, when a house goes up for sale, if it makes sense that that would be a good park space, we should be looking at buying that house space.
There's no chance of those private developers gonna buy that.
Might I suggest that you just put this on and really bring that up as a discussion item, uh, with the council, to see if that's.
I just gotta get everybody to agree to put it on the work plan. On the agenda, not on the work plan?
I would say either, or, if you can talk to, if you ask the commission, just put it on there and let's open it for discussion. Or let's put it on the next item, which we'll be discussing after this. The next item on our agenda tonight. Is preparation for the joint meeting. So I, I think if you take one of those evidence, we can get past this item, rather than thinking if it's a good idea or not. I'm just suggesting it, you can do.
It can be considered that it's something that can be brought up.
We put it to the council and ask the city council. You can put it on, I just think it's a, it's a, it's a goal that's never gonna get.
Yeah, I just don't think it should be a top party. I think we should focus on the parks we have.
Everybody agreed on that?
I'm agreed that you can ask city council about it, for sure. If you think it's important. I wouldn't put it on the work plan. Parks master plan.
Chair and I have discussed this and I really feel, uh, as, as a professional in this field. And the director of the department, I think it's important that we have an updated work plan, uh, master plan, as some of it's called. Um, and I think that should be, uh, a focus in the upcoming year, uh, to spend the money to get a, a parks master plan that's up to date. And professionally done, uh, because if you don't have a plan for what you're doing for all of our parks, you start getting, okay, we're gonna. Put a roof on this building over here, we're gonna, yeah, exactly, piecemealing everything and it's not cohesive. We need to set that parks plan and priorities and then bite that off in trunks going for the goal of whatever that.
Uh, left-hand column area, you know, which is strategic planning. And then that is embodied as the, uh. Updating, reviewing and updating the. Parks master plan.
What would be the, what's the side of?
That, yeah, that, that needs to go in the next column, sorry. The impact is to, um.
Improve the.
Approach park planning in a holistic way.
Yeah, that's right, right?
You won the commission when we tried to get that updated and they, and for some reason the commission said no? No, I think, no, I think the commission agreed that they liked it.
Yeah, but then the council said it was gonna, didn't have the budget.
Well, it's a good thing to discuss. Uh, parks, uh.
Did you guys talk about the grand part?
Parks planning. No, sorry? Did you ask something?
We'll see if we're done.
We didn't have it in our brainstorm, do we need to add something?
No, because that's part of this, so that's all.
Grant part update, it's already.
And then that's, and that's kind of what, what I, why I bring up the parks master plan is because if you have that, the grant park is included on that. And you can make that a priority or not. So, but things are happening with the, I can give updates at a regular meeting.
Okay, cultural art and programming. I think we covered it. Okay, I'm just thinking. Although you guys, that's. We've got the word cultural in there instead of.
What are you looking for?
That one, the multicultural.
Multicultural events.
Right where the line, right where the scene. Do you want to think about the word multi and just have it be cultural so it matches our name?
Yeah, cultural.
Yeah, could we do that? Just use the word culture.